I'll work with this. See if I can get this tomorrow to work, if I'm gonna have a chance to do it.
Can't imagine why not to be doing anything else.
No, no. I stopped winning and get your pay.
Oh, no.
No problem.
Had 195.
What?
Some of them.
I was gonna say about half of them.
Probably. Art.
I tell you what, do, let me just send it to, I'm gonna just send it.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's the computer, I think it's something I'm doing on my.
Okay.
So it's a map.
When I go onto OneDrive, all I can see is agendas, budget documents.
You're seeing same thing.
And that's about it.
Okay.
There, there's no, there is no financial info, it's just.
Uh-uh, you're saying same thing.
Agenda, and you, then you got the folders within the agendas.
And that's okay, I can, I can access it through the link she's sending.
I couldn't, I couldn't even do that.
You couldn't?
No, it's recently a screenshot, everything down there except for the art folder. It was the weirdest. And I sent out the link today.
He broke it.
He perfect saw how it's spot.
Wow.
No, he's not even listening. How is this we're doing tonight?
What are we doing, wondering about what time is it?
Well, I can't, well, I can't get my Fitbit. When you get the OneDrive figured out, figure out on my Fitbit what I need to do to get it.
Oh.
I'm still on the West Coast.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is five o'clock as our clock on the wall is indicating. And we welcome you here tonight as we deal with how to spend $28 million. Never thought we'd have a problem doing that. And, and we don't so far, but we're just now getting started tonight. Glad for all of you to be here to participate. And our folks that are watching on Facebook or YouTube, we welcome you to this process as well. And it is important. The county's got about 28 million. Our municipalities combined have another 14 million. So we have a, a good number to, to, to use to the benefit of the county, leverage some of it, we think, and turn it into some good things for our county as, as it's intended. I would remind our commissioners that we still have the 1.25 million in our strategic planning budget that we did not set aside, we said to decide we did not budget for a specific cause during our budget process back in June. So that could also be in play as we go through these processes. Also, some of the projects are actually in, have been recommended for funding by our state representatives in the House or the Senate. One in particular that I am aware of is the project at the Luxe Canary down in Seagrove. That, I think Representative Al McNeil has requested about one and a half million dollars for that project. So we take that into consideration also as we go forward. We set our priorities, the two things that are specifically mentioned in the legislation, among other things, but infrastructure, water and sewer that can benefit this county for many, many years to come. And also for tourism, as mentioned in the legislation as well. And Hal will give a few more details on that when he opens up tonight with the presentation. So we welcome you to, to this process tonight. It is, it is just the beginning. We already have another meeting scheduled for September the 15th, where we will take what we learned tonight and maybe thin it out a little bit, see, and come back. Also, I mentioned infrastructure. None of the presentations tonight will deal with infrastructure projects. That will be specifically on the September 15th agenda. That would involve water and sewer projects, for example, to properties where we can develop, and maybe an industrial park or something like that. So that will be a part of our September 15th, rather than the presentations tonight. These are pretty much our agencies and various community requests that we will be receiving tonight. So with that, I'm going to ask Hal to open up with, with sort of how we got here, what, what the legislation is, to the presenters. Now, there's, there's 16 presenters on this list tonight. I don't think these 16 presenters in, in the audience, but it's going to take some time to get through this. So what we plan to do, and Mr. Morgan will be keeping a timer, we'll give each presenter five minutes, we'll tell you when five minutes is up, and you'll have another minute in your presentation. I would say if, if you get questions, that is not going to take away from your time. And I'm sure there'll be some questions from commissioners as we proceed. So we want to be fair, but we don't want to overly extend the process. So we just make that as sort of our guideline for our presentations tonight. So Hal?
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to very, very briefly talk about the American Rescue Funds, what they are and what the funding process will be that we will use as a Randolph County government. The American Rescue Plan was passed by Congress and signed into law on March the 11th. This legislation was created to assist local communities to recover from negative impacts that they had experienced as a result of the coronavirus pandemic. Randolph County Government's been allocated $27,905,631 of recovery funds. The money's going to be distributed in two installments with the final distribution no earlier than May 2022. Funds must be committed by December 2024. Encumbered funds, that means funds that have been set aside for specific projects, can be used through December 2026. Each municipality in Randolph County has also been awarded federal recovery funds based on their population. Recovery funds available to our municipalities total $15,900,000. That's a total amount of recovery funds coming into Randolph County to the county government and to the municipalities of $42,683,330. The United States Treasury Department has provided interim rule guidance on the use of these recovery funds. And we expect the final rule guidance to be provided by the Treasury Department in the next month. There are many federal guidelines and restrictions that must be followed for use of these recovery funds. In fact, there's more restrictions to these particular funds than just about any that, that I can recall. Funds must be used to address negative effects of the COVID pandemic on the community and your, and by your request, you're showing how this money can help you recover from what those negative effects and impacts were. The state of North Carolina has also received federal recovery funds. And one of the challenges that will face your county government will be to wait until we know what the state action is concerning the use of their funds. And the reason for that is so that we can get maximum impact on the funds that are going to local government and those funds that are going to the state as they may be applied to, to projects that we're talking about tonight. Tonight's meeting is an opportunity for our Board of County Commissioners to receive feedback from the community. What are our needs? What projects and funding requests would address these needs? What projects and funding would truly be transformational for Randolph County? And that's going to be a key word that you'll hear over and over in the months ahead as we deliberate on these projects, transformational projects having an impact on our community. This would, this meeting is the beginning tonight that would also give our Board of County Commissioners options as we move forward. Mr. Chairman, we have 16 community and agency requests scheduled for tonight's meeting. Now, the Board of Commissioners have already in their agenda your detailed applications that you filled out in specific about going into details about your particular request. Because of the number of applicants at tonight's meeting, we would ask, as the chairman has said, that each request be limited to five minutes, and then the board will allow an additional minute once you have reached the five-minute mark. But you should remember that the board has your full application and that you submitted with all the details that are available right then. So, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's an overview of the American Rescue Plan and our funding process tonight. We do not expect, by the way, the Board of Commissioners will make any final decision on any of these requests tonight.
Does any commissioner have a question of Hal before we proceed? All right. We're going to take it on by our list. First is up Family Crisis Center. Darren?
Good evening, and thank you for hearing my request this evening. As most of you all know, Emmy's House CAC, Children's Advocacy Center, we see children who have been sexually and physically abused in the community. What we have seen from the COVID, the effects of the COVID pandemic is a 67% increase in referrals. And when did this happen? This happened when the children went back to school. So what does this tell us? This directly correlates to the pandemic in the sense that most of our referrals originate from the school system. So when the children were not in school, we were not receiving the referrals from the schools that went to the Department of Social Services or went to law enforcement. But when they went back to school, when the pandemic lifted a little bit as far as kids were able to go back to schools, we saw a spike. Well, we didn't have the capacity to handle that spike in referrals. So that's why we're asking for financial assistance for a full-time nurse practitioner and another forensic interviewer. Now, with the cases that we've had, we're gonna have, we anticipate another spike as the kids have now gone back to school again. And we really need this assistance to be able to handle the cases because if we do not have the capacity to handle these cases, we're gonna be right back to the, to the waiting period that we had before there was a CAC. And you remember before March of 2018, when we didn't have a CAC in Randolph County, these kids had to wait six to eight weeks. And we've discussed in the past the detrimental effect that has on these children not being able to be seen. You know, and aside from that one child and the detrimental effects on that child, the perpetrator is still out there offending on other children. And we don't want to go back to that place where the kids are having to wait six to eight weeks to be able to be seen and for someone to determine, is this child safe in their home? Is this child in need of other services? You know, what is going to happen to this child while other children are being offended? So that's why it is crucial that we receive assistance with this, and you can see the direct correlation to the pandemic. I'm assuming that was about five minutes? Okay, okay.
What's that, Darren? Do I have a question, Darren?
I do.
Okay.
All right. So what happens currently, you contract with local physicians?
Yes, currently, we're contracting with local physicians, but they can only come on certain days at certain times, so the availability is, is pretty, you know, scarce.
Okay, so will you continue with that? And, and will, will these, these physicians be in addition to that?
No, what we, we'll hire a full-time physician, physician to be there full-time. 40, nurse practitioner, full-time, 40 hours a week. And then we will maintain a contract with one physician as needed. You know, if this one were to go on vacation or be sick or whatever, because we can't just have one only, we need to have another trained person in the county.
But this, this is a, your cost, your request is tied to a full-time medical provider?
Yes, mhm.
And what, what was your percentage of increase, Darren?
67%.
67?
Yes, uh-huh, uh-huh.
What, what timeframe do these, does this expenditure cover? Is it a year or what's?
So it was two years in that budget. And see, the great thing about it is, I don't know if you've heard about the VOCA fix with the federal government? We had a tremendous decrease in federal funding. Well, Congress, Congress voted to fix that and to give us back that loss of funding. And that will take place in October of 2022. So, so this is just a short fix for that, and we'll recover those funds. So we can sustain it.
My theme is probably gonna be tonight, make sure that.
Yes, this is sustainable.
This is not recurring fund.
No, 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 right, exactly. This is just for this critical pandemic issue. And then going forward, if cases, you know, continue at this level, we can sustain it. And, and we have, this is only for a portion of those salaries. Medicaid reimbursements will cover 40% approximately of the salary.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Darren.
All right, thank you.
Randolph Arts Guild?
Good evening. I'm Grace Moffett, and I'm a member of the Arts Guild Board of Directors. And I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the Guild's request for funding through the Rescue Act. We all know how devastating COVID has been, and it has been especially devastating to arts organizations because we've not been able to deliver programming and to generate funding based on not being able to be open and have in-person activities. As many of you know, the Arts Guild was founded in March of 1970, so we're 50 years old. And we're the only arts organization in the county that appeals to and provides information for all genres of art, from painting and sculpture to film and theater. Our request is for $81,814 to fund a full-time program manager for two program years. And this is to allow us to return to pre-pandemic staffing, giving us the chance to generate some programs and some revenue. These funds would, requested would be, we would be, enable the Arts Guild to hire a dedicated program manager to develop and implement arts programming for enjoyment by the residents throughout the county. The proposed position is designated to intentionally create programming that will be accessible to residents in their individual communities as well as meeting the underserved populations in the county. The initiatives such as homeschool arts program, elder arts, monthly gallery exhibits, summer art camp, concerts, and multicultural events would be planned in collaboration with partners such as the Randolph Youth Theater, Randolph Public Library, Communities in School, RCC Adult Basic Life Skill Program, the Liberty Arts Group, the City of Archdale, and the City of Roundham, to name a few. In addition to in-person planning and programming, we would also continue to explore other creative methods to deliver artistic content to the community and provide virtual experiences. Receiving this funding will be vital to ensure the Guild continues to make a positive contribution to the county's rich heritage of providing artistic and cultural resources, which makes Randolph County a wonderful place to live, work, and play. Thank you for helping the Guild restart the arts for the residents of Randolph County by granting the funding request to hire a program manager for 2022 and 2023. These funds will ensure the future of the Randolph Arts Guild and allow the Guild to continue to be the window to the arts in our community now and for the next 50 years.
Thank you. And I should have asked this, Darren, probably, does this, does this include, like, benefits? Is it, is this an all-in number?
It's an all-in number.
And will you, you mentioned specifically Archdale. Will you be making a request of any other municipality for some of their art funds?
We have made some requests, but thus far, we've not received any additional request.
Okay. Similar amount or?
No, we, this position, we are hoping to fund so that we can serve the entire county to be able to take programming to those areas.
And after two years, hopefully, things will recover enough where funding would be available to?
To continue, exactly, because pre-pandemic, we did have a program manager that we had to furlough during the pandemic and have not been able to bring that position back on a full-time basis. And you probably know that, you know, we weren't able to have the Fall Festival last year, which was a major fundraising and revenue-producing event. We are planning for it this year, but we, we don't know whether that will be a possibility or not. But we haven't been able to have programming in our building because of social distancing and the size and things of that sort. So if we can get through the 22, 23 period, we feel like we can return to pre-pandemic funding of our positions.
Right. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the Ashboro Randolph Chamber, where's Lynn? Here. I think we have a handout in our places.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight. We really appreciate it. And I want to talk to you about the Business Gym. This is a partnership really between our Chamber, Venture Ashboro, and RCC Small Business Center. And to give you a little bit of background, COVID is what caused the situation that we're in. People were furloughed, people were laid off, students were taught virtually, so they were at home. Local businesses suffered loss of revenue. Stimulus helped, stimulus funds that came in. What, what? Huh?
You gonna draw your slides?
Oh, sure. Uh, how does that work? There we go. Uh, thank you. So what happened is families had to have somebody at home, especially if they had children in school. They had to start getting creative about how to make a living. And to give you an idea, our Chamber, when COVID hit, we had 830 members. We lost 111, 111 in 2020. We had 40 whose businesses closed. We had 35 that said they were dropping their membership because of COVID and resources were tight. We had 24 that located their business. They relocated outside the county, outside the service area. And then we had a dozen that merged. So for example, when SunTrust and BB&amp;T merged, we lost one and kept one. And so, but we had 45 new members join, and, and so that's where we were. But it, it was a real good indicator to us about what was happening to small business. So then some people went back to their old jobs, some went on to other jobs, some are still trying to figure it out, especially if they have kids at home. There's also a lot of people starting their own businesses. We found out recently through the North Carolina Rural Center that Randolph County had a 62.5% increase of new business startups last year, in 2020. So let that sink in, 62.5% increase in new business startups in one year. And those are those people that are trying to figure out what to do as a result of the pandemic. So what we find is we've got some aligning things going on. We have established businesses, you know, remember 35 out of the 111 said that business was bad and they just couldn't continue with the Chamber membership. We have new businesses that want to establish themselves. We have established businesses that are trying to reinvent themselves, and both are looking for a way to become sustainable. So who do they turn to? Primarily, they turn to the RCC Small Business Center. They go to Venture Ashboro. But a lot of them turn to the Local Chamber of Commerce, no matter which community they're in. And we noticed an unprecedented number of people coming through our doors, calling, emailing, wanting to know, how do we start a business? And so in talking with our partners at Venture and at RCC, we found we're all getting the same number and same increase of calls from folks. So in brainstorming, we came up with this idea called the Business Gym. It's a learning portal that would be free to everyone. It's on-demand training. It's just the meat and potatoes. And same, 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 meaning if somebody wants to learn how to start a business, they can go to this place, and everybody's gonna get the same information, the same downloadable materials, everything would be the same. They're not getting something different. Plus, it allows us to accommodate and handle a much, you know, exponentially more people than if we're doing it one-on-one. So to give you an idea of what this looks like, people would come into this website, and it's a place to go to work out your business. You go to a gym to work on your body, you go to the Business Gym to work on your business. And then you come into this area that shows different rooms. The training room is gonna be where most people go, and in there are gonna be five-to-eight-minute videos, very short, very succinct, that give you just the meat with a particular topic. So we might have five videos on how to start a business. It might be a series of five with each step, specific to Randolph County. You know, this is where you go to the Register of Deeds. This is where you go to find the Tax Department. This is where you go to Startup Water, that sort of thing. We are gonna have areas where people can go in, I think the equipment room. We'll have downloadable materials. We'll have downloadable slide decks. We'll have templates for people to use. We'll have social media templates they can download. We'll have checklists on how to start a business. We'll have toolkits. You know, how to safely sanitize and protect your customers and your employees. Links through the Small Business Center, links to Department of Labor sites that they can go to, to how to handle when somebody's out with COVID. You know, how should we respond? One minute left, okay. So it's just gonna be filled with a ton of information. And why we're asking for the money, we'll get to the main thing. We want this to be a free service to everyone. We could charge a subscription, but frankly, the people who need it most aren't gonna be able to pay $7 a month or whatever. We can support and assist, like I said, exponentially more people with this. We'd be able to avoid having to go to other businesses, asking them to sponsor this to make it available. Plus, it's a great way for the county to demonstrate support for small business in trying to help small businesses and small enterprise. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
This function's sort of like some of the incubator.
It's like an online incubator in a way.
Questions?
You might want to just elaborate a little bit on how this, this is a subscription that you're paying for? Who's providing the content?
Oh, the content is local experts. Thank you for asking. So Venture Ashboro, Dr. Jonathan Thill has committed to do 25 videos of varying topics. How, finance for non-finance managers, so teaching people how to read a P and L statement. What's a, what's a, what do you call it? The balance sheet? Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm not a finance manager. It'll have things, managing multi-generational teams, how to market your business on a shoestring. We've just got a plethora of topics, but a lot of it'll be geared toward what people are experiencing right now. And the thing that's really great about this, we could go ahead and. And the thing that's really great about this, we could go ahead and put on classes and workshops, but then people need to make themselves available. This would be online, it would be free, they can log in, and they can watch it on demand on their time, in five-to-eight minutes. It's not like you've got to carve out an hour and take notes, you can always go back to it. Some of these videos will have downloadables that go with it. So for example, if there's a series of five, how to start a business, there'll be checklists they can download that go with it, but they'll be able to watch it when they've got the time and not take time away from a job that they've got. And, you know, or even on a coffee break, they could watch a video. So we're excited about that.
All right, other questions?
You've got, you know, in your application, that this would be funded with the county, the Chamber of Commerce, Venture Ashboro, and then there are question marks by RCC Small Business Center, or, you know, underfunding. Why?
Oh, I didn't know what dollar amount to put there, because they provide, I don't think there'll be any dollars coming in from them.
But services.
Yeah, for services. They provide content and they pay a fee if anybody at the Chamber who's signed up with them, or Venture Ashboro who's signed up with them, to provide one-on-one counseling.
Okay, good.
They provide a fee for that. And so it would be eliminating that and keeping more money with the Small Business Center to assist with other things. And I, I'm sorry, I put the question marks because I wasn't quite sure how to address that.
Okay, good. I'm glad.
And going back to another question you raised about, have we asked anybody else? We have talked to the City of Ashboro about kind of an extension of this with Venture Ashboro offering, remember the Black Business Accelerator Program? We want to do a second one of those, one geared toward women-owned businesses, one for Hispanic-owned businesses, and as well as master classes. That is not the Business Gym. We may record some of that and upload it to it, but we're working with the City and Venture Ashboro as kind of an enhancement to this.
All right. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Communities and schools?
So, I guess I'm running my slideshow too. Yay, I can see it. So I point this here, or, y'all, I'm really bad with this stuff. I can make them, but then when it gets time to show them, I have issues. Good evening, I'm Paula Owens, representing Communities and Schools. Thank you so much for allowing us to apply for these funding, for this fun, ah, this funding. And I'd just like to talk to you about what our idea is, our plan. We would like to fund two success coaches who would be hired, trained, and deployed by Communities and Schools in local schools to help mitigate the impact of COVID-19 in our schools. I'm sure you can imagine that that impact, quite frankly, the depth and breadth of that is yet to be totally determined. But I have met with the principals at Ashboro High School and at Southeast Randolph Middle School, both of whose have some pretty compelling data that suggest that these would be very valuable positions for them. You can, well, see, I told you I couldn't do this. What do you do? Okay, how about that? Okay. So our mission statement is here, no need for me to go through that. This is the CIS model, and this is how our framework that we do all of our work we do now. What I'd like to emphasize is that this position, even though we don't call it that, this is exactly what our other staff members, our seven other staff members who are in the schools are doing already each and every day. We just don't happen to have anyone at Ashboro High School or at, at SERMS. The site coordinator, we call those people student support coaches in North Carolina, and the success coach is also a term that has been coined, if you like, by Communities and Schools. The role of a success coach would, there would be a full-time presence in the school. One of the key pieces that they would do is to build relationships with students. And that could be done, you know, hanging out in the cafeteria, before and after school, sporting events, et cetera. As I said, this is not a new role for Communities and Schools. The role would have much flexibility and would be directly guided by the leadership at the school. It, it is not something that we go in and prescribe, it is actually where we provide some training for a staff member to go in there, and we provide resources that are needed, and the school helps us decide how to use that person through a needs assessment process, et cetera. All of our work is done on a referral basis, so students come to us through referrals from school staff and leadership. The training would be provided by us in whatever programs or supports or interventions are indicated by the school needs assessment plan. We would set goals in combination with the school leadership team and then figure out which supports were applicable to the needs at hand, with the goal being student success. I will also emphasize that all of our work with students, when we deliver a Tier Two or Three support, which is a small group or individualized support, is done after a consent from parents is obtained. And we also have a memorandum of understanding with both Randolph County Schools and Ashboro City Schools to, to do that work and to have access to student data as a part of that work. And of course, all with parent consent. So, and to continue on that vein, we measure our success, we have our own internal data management system that is regulated, so to speak, by our national office as well as our state office. So there are required reports on our end, and all of our people are trained for data entry into this management system. And that's where, that's why we need student data, because we set goals, we have baselines, metrics, we follow the student throughout the year, and then we report their progress. Who and why now? We feel that the students are definitely a disproportionately impacted community as a result of COVID-19. We serve specifically K through twelve students. We already have seven people deployed in elementary schools, well, six, and then one of them is, I take that back, five, one in a middle school, one in a high school. And we feel there's a great need to expand our services. We are particularly targeting students of poverty, students who are disengaged or disenfranchised, students of color, students who have fallen significantly behind academically, students who are showing the results of social isolation, the absence of relationships that are often cultivated in the school. And you can see some of the compelling data at both Ashboro High School and at SERMS. And I'll just draw attention to the graduation rate decrease at Ashboro High School, which is very concerning, and the huge increase in retentions in the past year. And then for Southeastern Randolph Middle, I will, one note that I do not have on my slide is that there were two-hundred-and-fifty students at SERMS who were absent ten or more days last year, not taking into consideration A.D. Day or quarantines. Ten days is a huge amount to miss in school. And Dr. Johnson, the principal there, told me that that was one piece of significant data that didn't always show up in a, in a school report card, because you get your whole school. And he said, those kids are drastically behind. And he doesn't have the school staff available to catch them up at this point. They're doing all they can, obviously. And he feels, as do we, that the relationship and the, with a dependable adult is something that may be missing that CIS could help provide. When? Now. We are ready now. And this is the work we do, we just want to do more of it. And so to do that, we have to have more people. And I'll leave you with a quote by Bill Milliken, our co-founder. He said, "It is relationships, not programs, that change children." Those of you that have been in public ed, and I know some of you had, and of course, your kids have gone through public education to a large degree, know that we, we tend to throw programs at people. I know as an educator, I remember that. We do one program, it was like the flavor of the month sometimes. And I think what we try, what we try to do is, yes, we do use programs and supports and interventions, but what we really look at is the relationship between either our staff member and the student, or the mentors and volunteers we're able to bring in. And as you know, we're not able to do that right now, so this has been something that has been greatly missed.
Paula, I'm sure some of those issues that you mentioned appear in more than just those two schools. Was there one, one thing that really stood out that?
You're absolutely right. What we did to target these, of course, I talked with superintendents and, and school staff. And Ashboro High School is one that we've been looking at for several years, as we felt like a CIS person would be well-placed there. And it, it, not because there's trouble afoot or any of that, just because we felt like they're changing demographic, they're changing some of their data points. And, and after talking to Dr. Crooks, she apparently has been putting a lot of pressure on the district. She said, "I need somebody to come in here and help these kids who are making these transitions from a remote environment to a face-to-face environment," because last year, apparently, when they did go back full-time, they still had pretty high absenteeism, even among the kids that said, "We're coming." So they didn't come. So, and, or they signed into their Google Meet for however many minutes, and then they were out of there. So we've got a lot of time to make up, and we're just a partner with the schools. We certainly are not the end-all, be-all. And we are just one partner that we feel we can make a difference in this area.
Would you expect those positions to be permanent?
I would love for them to be. And so what that's going to be is incumbent upon us, our board, to get out there and shake the bushes and see if we can get some sustaining funds, absolutely. That has been in our strategic plans since I've been at CIS, which is, just finished my sixth year, sixth year. And we have tried, we've been trying to grow for all that time. It's like we, we just need a seed to get us going, I think. We have grown the hours that our staff serves in the school, but not, not the numbers of staff members.
Is this a one-year time?
Two years, hopefully, yes.
Two years.
So with the idea that if it's funded for the first year, that we would be able to renew it for a second year.
Okay, what kind of qualifications are you talking about with success, with success coaches? Are you talking about educators?
It could be. We, we would look at that very carefully. We've, for instance, we recently hired a new person to serve Ashboro City as a whole, replacing someone who retired. And we looked at, we had candidates with social work degrees, we had one with a bachelor's in social work, we had one with a master's in social work. There are folks out there that really want to work in the schools, but they don't really want to be a teacher. And so we, we, when we put that position online, we had about fifteen or sixteen applicants, which was crazy in, in this current day. So we had a variety. We have one young lady who we interviewed who had a degree in psychology, but she had experience working in a CIS affiliate in another part of the state. So she had some great qualifications. She's also a Randolph County native, which says a lot. She is not living here, but wanted to come back.
How far can you go as far as what home life is like? What's, what other factors are contributing to some of these?
Well, one of the things that is a component of what we're looking at is a parent engagement piece, and, and trying to do some things where we take things out into the community. And this, again, would be a partnership with the school. We couldn't, we can't do that just with us, you know, we would need some of their help with that. So that is a huge piece of it, and we also have another, it's, it's, it's called an intervention, it's called Check and Connect. This is something that we are already using that has a, a required parent component. So if we decide that that's going to be an intervention for a kid, then we have to have their parent as part of it. There is actually a weekly contact with the parent. So the parent is, there, the home is certainly a big piece of it. One of the things that you see in situations where there's little, there are little economic resources, is that there's less access to books, to liter, to literary pieces of work in their home. And, and part of this grant we did write in is to buy books for kids.
All right, other questions?
Thank you. Let me see if I can get this to go away. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. At least a partnership for children.
Good evening, Commissioners and County Leaders. The COVID-19 pandemic has touched the lives of all Randolph County families. Children, we know, are quite resilient by nature, but when parents lose jobs or income, as so many have recently, it can cause a cascade of traumatic events for children. Losing a home, skipping meals, or having a parent struggle with depression can result in serious long-term consequences for our kids. In the pandemic, our children have been out of school, facing isolation and significant learning losses, depression and suicidal ideation have skyrocketed among adolescents. In 2020, a record-high number of sixty-two Randolph County residents died from overdosing. Reports and substantiations of child abuse and neglect increased in Randolph County during the pandemic, while other counties were seeing decreases. Our limited family support programs anchored by our Parents as Teachers Program are filled to capacity with slow-moving wait lists. From our DSS, we know that the number of youth in foster care has jumped from seventy-nine children in the fiscal year ending in 2018 to a hundred-and-eighty last year. The number of youth referred to Child Protective Services has catapulted from a hundred-and-fourteen in 2019 to six-hundred-and-fifty-five last year. The filing of petitions alleging abuse or neglect or dependency has doubled from seventy in 2019 to a hundred-and-thirty-nine last year.
Libraries regularly confront the community needs and issues identified by Lisa. We're often referred to as second responders after someone suffers, suffers a trauma, or sometimes as they're in the throes of a trauma. We're where they turn to begin rebuilding their lives. We know we've had library users who are living in their cars, we know we've had kids in the library who don't know where their next meal is coming from. And, you know, we encounter people who are acting out, as Hal Well knows when I call him and alert him to a situation, but, you know, and we know there's an underlying cause, but we don't know what the, you know, we don't have the capacity to, to deal with it. Since the pandemic, we're again seeing job seekers who need intensive help applying for work, including digital literacy skills. We're also seeing people who are seeking rental assistance under the NC Hope Program. And people turn to us not just for the resources we provide, but because the library is a trusted institution. In our recent community survey, when we asked people what they value about the library, one of the words we saw over and over again was the word "safe." The library is a safe place. So librarians can find information, educate and refer, or provide specialized help, and we know that this is transformative in people's lives, but the level of help we can provide often runs up against limitations, especially in human services interactions. Sometimes a person need, person's need exceeds the scope of our service or training, or just practical limitations. Often, we have to move on to the next person waiting. We're not case managers, so we can't always follow through to ensure that someone receives the assistance they need once they leave the library armed with the skills we've given. That's where library social work programs come in. While the presence of social worker, workers in libraries is not new, it's still an emerging trend in librarianship. It initially involved as a response to homelessness, but in the last ten years, the programs have expanded to serve any community members in need. In North Carolina, Greensboro, High Point, Catawba, and Wilkes County- In North Carolina, Greensboro, High Point, Catawba, and Wilkes County have hosted social work students a couple of afternoons each week, and New Hanover County Public Library has a full-time social worker on staff. Perhaps one of the most highly-developed programs in the area is in Richland County, South Carolina. That's Columbia. They are now a Department of the Library with seven social workers and all, and serving all 12 library locations. All these programs have reported successful outcomes. In the trusted, safe, approachable environment of the library, the social workers help people with the basics of everyday life, finding housing, clothing, rental assistance, food assistance, employment and transportation, applying for government programs, tracking down free or low-cost mental health, or medical care, or dental services. And critically, they can follow through and manage cases to ensure that those seeking help achieve a successful result. The social workers also help identify people in crisis and intervene before things get worse. They help build the library's capacity to address community concerns. They forge partnerships with other community organizations and pursue grants. They support public health initiatives. The Richland County, South Carolina, social workers partnered with Walgreens to provide over 1,200 free flu shots through the libraries. And the social workers train library staff and others in the government and service sectors on trauma-informed services such as mental health first aid and human trafficking recognition. Now, you know, we know about the, the impact on county employees of the wellness program led by Sam Verner. Think of this as an accessible wellness program that not only helps individuals and families, but also relieves potential burdens on the social safety net.
So in creating, in creating this system of care approach, ultimately, we hope to see fewer children entering the foster and judicial systems. We will help service providers better be able to cross-refer to each other and follow those referrals through to completion. And with us tonight, as we conclude, we have a mom with us, Cherie Pemberton, because we know that moms are the true experts on how to raise their families in both times of crisis and good times. And so we want Cherie just to wrap us up by telling what these program, what this program could mean to our Randolph County families.
Meeting families where they are is in the safe place. And in our libraries where we already go, we feel safe, we feel secure, and we trust them. Being community-based in all seven libraries, we will be, it'll be a great plus instead of us having to solely come here to Ashboro. My family, for example, who lives in Ramsore. I love that this program is community-based and is community-centered, and it takes away the stigma of this great benefit. Moms, dads, grandparents want to do what's best for our families. And nobody should feel less than just because they need help and not know where to go. Many times, families just don't know where to turn and don't know the, you know, where to go. So moms and dads, this right here will help moms and dads navigate them to where they're not confused. And the services that we have now sometimes put them in confusion. So this right here and taking advantage of where, you know, this will help families a lot. So now, on behalf of everything and on behalf of the families like mine, all across Randolph County, I just want to say thank you for considering our application.
Thank you. Yes, I do, Lisa. Come on. Your note says funded for three years. Is that, is all three years included in your $740,000?
Yes, the $740,000, we feel, would be funding in full for three years. And the reason why we're requesting the three-years funding is we really do believe it will take that amount of time to see the, the complete, you know, results of, from this program. The idea in having these social workers embedded in the libraries is they won't be acting as isolated individuals. They will be full staff members of the libraries on a daily basis, imparting their knowledge, those skills, conversing with other people on the staff, so that it really becomes just part of that library culture. But we think that it will take more than one year to make that culture happen.
Are they going to rotate? Are they going to be based somewhere? Are they going to rotate?
So the idea would be that with the three full-time social workers is that they would split their time. Two of them would each cover two libraries, and then the third would cover the three remaining libraries, so that in any given week, there will be, you know, a number, a good number of hours that a social worker would be at that particular library.
Other questions?
I'd just like to say that I did not realize this statistic, that 16.7% of Randolph's families overall lack a high school diploma. That data goes back to 2014 through 2018 compared with 10.4 statewide. So, you know, putting these, locating these services, I think, is a novel approach. And I like the outside-the-box thinking. I like taking it to the communities, making it accessible for our parents who need it. And this might give us a, a better chance of breaking that, of breaking that cycle.
Absolutely.
And I have one more question. These are, they're called social workers. We hire social workers in social services. Are these the same, I guess, educated, qualified, trained as what we have in social services?
Yes, yes. It would either be bachelors of social work or masters, preferably masters of social work, people that would be hired into, to these positions.
But their jobs, social workers, will be in different areas, right?
And these social workers would be, though, kind of like specifically trained to the needs of families with young children and, and, you know, every, everybody, but with a particular interest in, in young children. Commissioner Haywood, what were you asking?
No, Dad answered the question.
Okay, yes.
The, the thing is, with families not, with families not being able to get to Ashboro, this right here would work great. Because right now, I do a lot in my community to try to help and guide, you know, because we have children raising children, so they don't know where to go. And I try my best to help where I can, but not even, I'm not a social worker. So I don't know every in and out, but I try to guide them, but if they can't get there, there's nothing we can do.
Do you ever, do you ever partner with social services in any way?
Yes. This is essentially a four-organization application, the Partnership for Children, the Public Library, the Department of Social Services, and our Public Health Department. We're all firmly behind this idea. We really do feel that it is thinking out of the box and will go so far in reducing the stigma that's so often attached to receiving programs and services. So we do have the full support of, of Tracy and the DSS staff. Public Health, DSS, the library, and the Partnership for Children.
Pull your mic.
You can put it back up now.
I can put it back up now. That's what I wanted to know. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
County Franklinville.
I don't have any pictures. Our PowerPoint guy, Perry, Mayor Perry Connor, had to go to a dermatology doctor's appointment. So I'd just start by asking you, if you haven't been to the Franklinville Library, you need to envision a library that is 15 steps above the parking lot and a total of 20 steps above the sidewalk, because it's on the second floor of our town hall building. Franklinville is the oldest public library in Randolph County. It started in 1924. Ashboro was started in 1936. Randleman, 1941. Ramsore, 1936, too. Liberty, 1942. And Archdale and Seagrove were only built in 1973. It's, Franklinville Library's been housed in the, in part of the Lower Mill. It's been in the Masonic Temple. It's been in the company store. And since 1963, it's been upstairs in what we call the soda shop. It moved into that space, when it moved in that space, it was a huge improvement over the tiny room in the basement of the company store where it used to be. The, the, it's town hall now because the town bought it in 1976, but is built in 1947. It's currently the oldest building in Randolph County that houses a public library. It was renovated in 1983 when a fluorescent light set the ceiling on fire, but it's, it's still marginal, and it's not ADA accessible in any way whatsoever. Every library director I can remember, from Ross back to Richard Wells, Suzanne Tate to Charles Anna Fox, they have all recommended that Franklinville build a new public library. Of course, in our system and, and our new relationship, the county is paying for all of the, the staff in the public library, but in, in the system, the municipalities are responsible for, for providing a, a home for the libraries. Now, 15 years ago, we looked at remodeling the old company store for this, but it did not qualify for USDA loan funding, community facilities funding, so we didn't do that. But the Friends of the Library started then under Lydia Craven and have raised $167,000 in yard sales, bake sales, flea markets, and cookbook sales for the library. The strategic plan for the county public library system, 19, 2014, we have a brand-new one, actually, but Ross hasn't talked to you about yet. It recommended a big, a bigger building on a ground floor suitable for regional users. Regional because even though Franklinville is 1% of the total county population, the Franklinville Library serves 10% of county library users. The library region shown on the strategic plan is, is kind of north from Franklinville, between, between Randleman and Liberty. That, it, it's not a circle right around Franklinville because it doesn't really go towards the south because they don't cross the river. So it's, it's, it's up north, just like Ramsore is, is not a circle. It goes towards Chatham. It goes down to, to Coal Ridge. Randleman actually goes towards, towards Archdale. So they figured all that from a computer program coordinated with the county library cards. When people check out a book, they know where you, where you live. So the 2014 plan here diplomatically calls the Franklinville Library dilapidated, crowded, cramped, confusing, lacks expansion potential, and lacks meeting and programming space. So I'm not sure where we'd put a social worker if we had one. The strategic plan recommends a new library of 7,400 square feet. That is more than twice the current size of the library, 3,000 square feet. We have a, a loan ready to go to the Community Facilities Program of the USDA. We've been working on it since 2016. We did an RFQ for Engineering and Architecture Studies in December 2019. And 20, April 2020, we selected Thomas Moreau, an architect of Greensboro, who's done the whole plans and, and, and exhibits for the library, the application to USDA.
So how current was, are those numbers, Matt?
All of our, all of our.
Your, your.
Usage numbers.
Estimated cost.
Oh, the $1.7 million is what he estimated, like, right now.
Okay.
So yes, I know costs are going up. Who knows what something costs by the time you bid it out and stuff like that. But 1.7 is, is basically what he said, which is why we're asking for 750, which gets it down to a million, which is a little bit better for us if we're going to borrow it all. So we, we have that ready to go. It's going to be submitted in September. It couldn't, they already had their money allocated for 2021, so we're going for the 21, 22 money. So the biggest concern is our borrowing power. You know, we've got other infrastructure applications pending here. And of course, that, this came up when Mary Joan wanted us to borrow, to do a USDA application for the Sandy Creek Bridge. And USDA said that borrowing for the library, borrowing for the US 64 water line, and for a bridge would be a bridge too far. So the, and the LGC basically told us the same thing because they're, since, since, I guess, they all worked from home during 2020. They're all over us nowadays, you know that. And so they, the LG, as far as they're concerned, they, they would have us dump the library application, too, and just go with the water lines, so we'd bring our enterprise funds back into better line. But our plan is still to submit both, see what the USA, USDA authorizes, both in loans and potential grants. We got our ARP money, too, but we get $165,000 a year, so it's not exactly enough to, to do any of these big projects that we are, are going to borrow for.
So you have a combination of potential, potential funding sources for the other million dollars?
Oh, yeah. The USDA loan, you know, we're, we can probably borrow the million dollars without any real problem. But the building that we want, that's big enough to be a regional library, and, and it's set on a site right behind the town hall and looking out at the river, so it's got to sort of have a basement to it. But, you know, that's going to be more than a million dollars, probably a million and a half, even if we cut back a lot of stuff. You may remember, Darrell, 20 years ago, you and I were elected officials, but the county built the Seagrove, built Seagrove a new library and paid about $750,000 for it, period, just for Seagrove. And that didn't include furniture, Ross tells me. So, so it would be more now, too. So, you know, that's, that's where we are about this application. We're, we're, we're thinking big because we want to cover a big area, and, and I think that's, you know, what libraries are for.
And you own the property there.
Oh, yeah. Yes, and we've already had the environmental studies done, two of them.
Just a matter of bringing it up out of the ground.
Yeah, so, so literally, everything is ready for the USDA application because we had to get all of that stuff ready to go.
Seems to me like that our libraries could also benefit students that have that, that may need to do virtual instruction, that have, that have broadband issues or technology issues and need some help with those from someone outside the home.
Yes, I, I totally agree. Virtual classrooms, I think, are, are the wave of the future, and the more, the more technology you can provide in one, the better. You know, y'all probably met down at RCC in, in the foundation room, and it's, it's the best place I know where you can, you know, get any, any kind of digital learning going on there. And I think that's what libraries need, too. Of course, we have no way to do that now, but part of what we're doing is having enough space that we can do that.
You're, you're building a facility roughly two and a half times what, what you currently have, which is going to require more staffing.
Maybe, I mean, the, the biggest part is, is going to be half of what you're talking about, well, not, a third of what you're talking about is going to be on the bottom floor, and that's going to be like the community meeting space rooms, and they won't really need to be staffed except for special events. So, yes, it, it's going to require more than two very part-time people, but that means we also would be open more hours, too, because right now, we're the only library open on Sundays, but we're also, well, we share our librarian halftime with Seagrove. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, Tourism Development.
Thank you, Chairman Frye, commissioners, and senior staff for allowing me the opportunity to present the Randolph County Tourism Development Authority's request for the ARP funding. Travel has been the hardest-hit industry in the United States due to COVID-19. The decline in travel has devastated our economy and American jobs. Nationally, the U.S. Travel Association reported the $500 billion loss in travel spending, costing the United States $1.1 trillion in economic output, a decrease of 42% in 2019, from 2019. Prior to the pandemic, direct travel jobs were 6% of the workforce, and total travel-supported jobs accounted for 11%. and total travel-supported jobs accounted for eleven percent. In twenty twenty, those direct travel jobs accounted for a disproportionate thirty five percent of jobs lost and total travel-supported accounted for a staggering sixty five percent loss. America will not be able to fully rebuild without the recovery of our tourism industry. At the conclusion of twenty twenty, Randolph County saw our occupancy tax rates down by thirty two point five percent from twenty nineteen. Revenues reported by our hotel accommodations were down forty two point two percent from the demand of those rooms being down thirty two point seven percent. Pandemic effects on the tourism and hospitality industry have been devastating and unlike any challenges that we've ever experienced. Our partners have remained resilient, they've yearned for education and remain steady in their hospitality despite struggles with staffing, supplies and products and restrictions on capacity due to crowd limitations. Our frontline staff members in hospitality have remained positive and compliant in safety protocols that have become second nature in daily operations. Our tourism partners have worked hard and continue to work hard to overcome the financial devastation caused by the pandemic. The negative economic impacts of COVID nineteen remain relevant in our everyday operations. We continue to be resourceful, resilient and creative in our efforts to fulfill our organization's mission as the official destination marketing organization for Randolph County by fostering sustainable economic growth and vitality with efforts to increase travel to and within Randolph County, the heart of North Carolina. Our proposed expenditures for the requested funding of one million dollars are comprised of the following. Staff replacement. The harsh reality of COVID nineteen struck the Randolph County TDA hard in the spring of twenty twenty, causing our organization to reevaluate our expenditures as our revenues decreased significantly due to the statewide and national stay-at-home orders. With travel at a standstill, our source of income, our hotels, bed and breakfast, Airbnb properties and campgrounds were the primary victims. We pushed through to make some difficult decisions with our marketing budget, our operations budget, which included a significant workforce reduction. Within the span of days, our organization went from a staff of six full-time employees that held responsibilities of management, marketing, advertisement, leadership and administrative duties down to two full-time employees. We have survived and strived during the past eighteen months with those two full-time employees continuing to produce the workload of a full team of employees that we had during the pre-pandemic era. For the success of our organization to serve each municipality and tourism partner in our county, we need more than those two employees as representatives at meetings and events for our industry's voice. We need to be able to replace the staffing of our full-time and part-time roles to maintain our recovery efforts for Randolph County's tourism industry and remain competitive with the similar, similar travel markets. Next, our sponsorship support. Our organization is an important puzzle piece in the events, festivals and tourism-related projects in all nine municipalities that make up Randolph County. The reduction in revenues forced our organization to deny multiple requests for our tourism partners in twenty twenty and in portions of twenty twenty one. With recovery monies, we will be, be in a position to reinstate that financial support to encourage our partners to host events or projects with safety measures at top of mind, ensuring that we remain in compliance with NCDHHS and our Randolph County Public Health Department. Program, programs and events that will benefit from our support may include performances at the Liberty Showcase Theater, seasonal Seagrove Pottery Studio Tours or festivals, Ashborough Copperheads and American Legion Baseball Competitions, Archdale Trinity Junior and Top Golf Tournaments, Randolph Ashborough YMCA and Bank of OZK JV Basketball Tournament and the Friends of the Library Sunset Series, just to name a few. Those events bring visitors to our area with overnight accommodations needs that generate revenues to our budget. Additional marketing projects outside of print and digital advertisements and sponsorship dollars for events include assistance with brochures, rack cards, maps and event flyers. We would utilize the recovery monies to support marketing projects for our partners that we were not able to accomplish in twenty twenty, twenty one due to reduction of occupancy revenues. Ongoing support to marketing projects include the downtown Ashborough, Seagrove Area Pottery Community and the Archdale Trinity Area Maps that are frequently used by our accommodations representatives to guide visitors and residents to support our local small businesses for shopping, dining and entertainment that enhance their time in our area. These pieces will have clear and concise messaging on the safe visitor experiences that can be encountered in Randolph County. Our public relations efforts, having the ability to share our story with return visitors, residents and potential visitors in today's society is challenging. Where do they see our message? Is it in print, social media postings or in our printed annual travel guide? They pick up at a welcome center? With recovery monies added to our budget, we'll be able to host more travel writers, influences, influencers, journalists, editors, photographers and bloggers to share messaging of the safe experiences that they are having in our area as another source of word-of-mouth marketing. The media we host will come from our focused and targeted drive market areas of Raleigh and Charlotte and areas of the Piedmont Triad region. We will continue to explore outreach in the Asheville, Wilmington and Fayetteville markets of North Carolina along with additional key markets of Richmond, Virginia and Greenville, Charleston, South Carolina, areas within a day's drive. Our investment in these opportunities to host media is, is valuable beyond measure. We hosted a social media influencer in twenty nineteen and she continues to use that footage and material from her time at the North Carolina Zoo and our Seagrove Pottery Community on her various social platforms for her followers. PPE, promotional items. A final element of our ability to market safe experiences in Randolph County and the heart of North Carolina is providing branded promotional items. These items have been used as an inexpensive and creatively fun marketing tool for years. We plan to use recovery monies to stock our inventory with branded items for use at events and distribute for special meetings and group gatherings that overnighted our accommodations. These items will be used while visiting our area and also remind the recipient to visit our website or social channels for updates on happenings with our tourism partners. Paisley Winkler is our Tourism Marketing Coordinator. She's passing out some of those items that we were able to purchase with CARES Act money from the fall. So in conclusion and summary, the cycle of tourism recovery begins with our ability to market and advertise our destination to those key drive markets as a safe visitor experience. Our goal is to extend those leisure vacations to provide a solid source of occupancy revenue and tax collection for our overnight accommodations. While we've seen successes in our struggles and challenges during this pandemic, we still have a lot of work to do. The recovery monies we're requesting will be used to support the communities, event organizers and tourism partners that have suffered the impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Thank you for your time this evening and the consideration of our request.
I have a two-part question.
Okay.
Are you seeing an increase in your revenues? And do you think it's going to be sufficient with this to get us back into business like we were?
We have seen a recovery and that's due to our leisure market. We're not dependent on sports and meetings. However, there's a lot of uncertainty right now. As Grace Moffett mentioned earlier with the Fall Festival, we don't know. We don't know what the, what the travel sentiment is. We have seen a small decrease with fall travel. People are still planning, but again, that can change within a week or two weeks. And a lot of travelers are looking at vaccination numbers in the counties and places that they're going before they make their decision.
This is, what, how long is the bridge here for the funding?
This is for the, the two, to twenty twenty four.
For another two years.
I feel confident that we'll be able to sustain whatever positions we're able to.
What's revenues?
I do, I do. Thank you all so much.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, Town of Liberty, Warren.
Good evening. Appreciate you guys having us. I'm Warren Dixon representing the Town of Liberty. We didn't think to bring any bribes tonight. We're, we're learning, we're, we're slow learners. Let me get my glasses. We're requesting ninety nine thousand dollars to help purchase the Liberty Hardware Building in downtown Liberty to turn, to turn into a town museum. We're calling this project the Liberty Heritage Museum. Our two goals are to bring tourism to downtown Liberty, to help merchants recover losses due to COVID and to provide field trip opportunities to populations that were denied these opportunities during COVID, such as Liberty Elementary students, senior citizens, daycares, churches and other groups. This is not a new project. We've been working toward finding a suitable location for a museum since twenty eighteen in partnership with the Friends of the Patterson Cottage in Liberty. The eighteen eighty four Patterson Cottage is the oldest remaining residence in Liberty. In nineteen eighty four, it was donated to the town and turned into a museum. The problem is it's no place for a museum. It's small, not climate-controlled, dusty, often rodent-infested. And those rodents are squirrels, Hal. It's not secure. The town has all these historic artifacts accumulated over forty seven years, but nowhere to safely store them and display them. I have artifacts at home in my closet. We have artifacts stored in barns. We have textiles, journals, papers, photographs stored at the library. We're in desperate need of a museum to protect and preserve and display these very special pieces of Liberty history and heritage. Purchasing the Liberty Hardware Building would help fill this need. But it would also serve to aid the downtown merchants in Liberty, most of whom were adversely affected by the COVID pandemic. This is the reason we're requesting American Relief Funds. Of the twenty one merchants surveyed in downtown area of Liberty, two had gone out of business since March twenty twenty. There, three were deemed to be essential and reported a slight gain in revenue since COVID. Two were closed for an entire period. These were reopened but lost a year's worth of revenue. The fourteen remaining businesses were closed at least two months and lost from twenty to fifty percent of their normal revenue. In addition, the Wrightsall Senior Center and Liberty Elementary School were closed most of the year and lost opportunities for field trips and programs. A downtown museum would help revitalize downtown by attracting, by attracting foot traffic, tourists and visitors to the downtown area through special exhibits and displays, weekend programs and community events, festivals, lectures and field trips. We would also promote and advertise downtown merchants inside the museum, encouraging visitors to explore the possibilities around them. This should increase exposure of merchants, restaurants and Liberty Showcase Theater, increasing revenue for their businesses. A museum would also create easy access for field trips for students, seniors, daycares, churches and other populations affected by COVID. We plan to use the ninety nine thousand in ARP funds along with sixty one thousand raised by the Friends of the Patterson Cottage to purchase the hardware building. The Friends will then provide fifty thousand dollars for asbestos abatement, repairs to the roof, renovations to the nineteen twenty seven restroom, updating electrical and security systems and additional nineteen thousand for equipment and supplies for the museum. The Town of Liberty will ensure the building, do maintenance, pay utilities and provide the artifacts to be displayed in the museum. Friends of the Patterson Cottage will serve as volunteers to staff the museum. We feel that this is an appropriate use of ARP funds to encourage tourism and would be a huge benefit not only to Liberty merchants but also be a valuable resource to the community of Liberty and the surrounding area. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Could you repeat some of the, the statistics and the amounts? I was trying to absorb them, but you're going pretty fast.
Am I going fast? I'm sorry. I'm, I'm more of a writer than a speaker. Okay, of the twenty one merchants surveyed, two had gone out of business since twenty twenty, since March twenty twenty. Three were deemed essential businesses and gained a little revenue. I think they said, some of them said about ten percent. Two were closed for the entire period. These will reopen but lost a year's worth of revenue. The fourteen remaining businesses were closed at least two months and lost between twenty and fifty percent of their revenue. One lady told me they lost seventy percent. So that's pretty much how COVID affected downtown Liberty.
I was referring to, to the amounts.
Oh, the amounts, I'm sorry.
You're talking about spending on the.
On the building, okay.
Building, yes.
All right. The building's going to cost us a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So we're spending ninety nine in ARP funds if we get the grant, sixty one thousand raised by the Friends of the Patterson Cottage. The Friends of the Patterson Cottage have been raising to either build or find a location for a museum since twenty eighteen. The Friends will provide fifty thousand dollars for us to renovate the hardware store.
Is that an additional fifty thousand dollars to renovate or is that included?
Yeah, it's additional. It's got, it's a nineteen twenty seven building. It's got nineteen twenty seven electrical and plumbing, roof, roofs and not in good shape. It hasn't been maintained very well. It's, it's a solid building. It's got three thousand square feet downstairs, three thousand square feet upstairs. It's going to make a nice area for a museum and eventually maybe we can have some meeting rooms upstairs. But it's going to take some, it's going to take some money. But the Friends of the Patterson Cottage have raised a hundred and thirty thousand.
What would the, what would the hours be? I know the, kind of the emphasis would be in order to draw, draw and attract people, primarily for the Liberty Showcase on Saturdays and that kind of thing. To give people something to do other than just go to the show there.
We want to stay open at least every Saturday of the year and some special occasions and maybe we can, it's, it's going to be manned by volunteers. So at least every Saturday. Chatham County Museum has a fifth, fourth Sunday, I think they stay open. We could do something like that. We could coordinate with Showcase Theater and hope some of the restaurants in the area would do the same thing, you know. We'd be flexible. Any more questions?
Any other questions?
Well, I think volunteers could be very effective. You know, when I went to the Outer Banks, I went to the lifesaving station at blah, blah, Chickamaconico. That was being manned by volunteers and they did an excellent job.
Yeah, we've got a good group of volunteers. We had the nonprofit group, Friends of the Patterson Cottage, real active group. So I think, I think we'll have a good museum.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Warren. The Randolph Heritage, Mac, I guess you're back up?
No pictures, but I brought show and tell. Y'all have heard me say for years that Randolph County has a special place in North Carolina textile history. We had five mills here built, five cotton mills built before eighteen fifty. We had two of the first ten or twelve built in the whole state of North Carolina, Cedar Falls eighteen thirty six and Franklinville eighteen thirty eight. When, when there were textile mills all around us in North Carolina, they didn't seem very special. I have always said that our history in Randolph County is very different because of the textile mills and our textile heritage. And, and our whole state history, I think, is different because of, of our manufacturing heritage. When the mills, as the mills gradually disappeared, their significance to our history became more clear with the loss of every job and the demolition of every old factory. I am grateful to Jerry Tillman, something y'all never expected to hear me say, for getting a bill passed in the twenty seventeen, eighteen session requiring the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources to determine the feasibility of establishing a North Carolina textile museum. A committee was formed and met several times in, in twenty eighteen in Franklinville and Ramsour and, and also looked at a site in Irwin in Harnett County. The study was finished in July twenty nineteen. Hal and Darryl got copies, all of you may have gotten copies eventually. It's ninety pages long. It's not exactly, well, it is bedtime reading, I guess, but some parts of it are important. It, it recommended that a state textile museum be established using the property and the collections owned by Randolph Heritage Conservancy. collections owned by Randolph Heritage Conservancy, our nonprofit. Operating in our favor was our central location in Franklinville and Cedar Falls and Randolph County, our proximity to the zoo, the fact that Randolph Heritage already owned more than 30 acres of property on Deep River, Free and Clear, and even more important, the artifact collections we own are unique in the United States and largely irreplaceable. When the American Textile History Museum in Lowell, Massachusetts closed in 2016, Randolph Heritage had the resources to pay to transport 20 truckloads of artifacts from New England to North Carolina and stored them in Eric Cluckin Box Building in Franklinville for a while. We were bidding against some big names like the Smithsonian Institution and the Henry Ford Museum, but those places just wanted bits and pieces of the collection, and we offered to take it all, and that made a big difference to the Massachusetts Secretary of State and the Attorney General who supervised the whole dissolution process. So why is a collection of old dusty rusty machines important? I could show you slides, but silent machinery looks about as impressive as a junkyard full of old cars, and I grew up in a junkyard in Ula, so I know that. I've seen my father and grandfather rebuild plenty of old junkers, and actually, I think that's a pretty impressive process, bringing a machine back to life. Using that comparison, what we have in storage at Cedar Falls and Franklinville are not just junky old Fords and Chevrolets, but actually they're the Packards, the Pierceros, and the Duesenberg's of American textile technology. We have machines in the collection that go back as far as the 1780s and all the way up to the 1970s. There are looms and spinning frames and knitting machines and every kind of, type of kind of American-made, American-designed machines built when American machinery was the best in the world. Now, I brought one thing with me that I thought would help illustrate the importance of the collection, and it came on a truck from Massachusetts with everything else. It's the plaque from the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, the History and Heritage Landmark Program, that was on the wall of the museum in Lowell. It designates the American Textile History Machinery Collection as a landmark of American mechanical engineering, number 251, in fact, out of 276. In North Carolina, Reed Goldmine and Spencer Shops are ASME landmarks, along with two dams up in the mountains. So there's only four in North Carolina, and none of them are portable, so this one traveled to get here. But it, it's nationally important, internationally important, really, because there's no other collection of American machinery like this. The Smithsonian, the Henry Ford Museum actually had an agreement with the American Textile History Museum that they didn't need to collect textile machinery because the American Textile History Museum was collecting it and responsible for it. So now we're responsible for it. It's real? It's heavy. But the future of our bill in the legislature looks really good. Senator Craven and Representative McNeil have made sure that we're a line item in both the Senate and the House budget, and like everyone, we're waiting for that shoe to drop. COVID totally postponed the introduction of the bill in last year's legislature. It was supposed to go in, in the summer, or actually in, in May, but it didn't. It also sidetracked our application to the Cannon Foundation to money, for money to start roof repair and replacement. That was, that was actually an application to the foundation that was started by the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources at their recommendation, and we were given some assurances that it was going to happen until COVID hit, and then the Cannon Foundation said they were backtracking and they were going to devote all of their resources last year to that. So we've raised and spent about $600,000 over the years to buy this property. We've had gifts like from the Water and Water Authority, and the feasibility says that it's gonna provide major jobs, and the comparison to the Transportation History Museum makes us think we could have more than 100,000 visitors a year there. It's also in the trail, that would help the trail, and I, I look at it as something like the zoo. When we started the zoo, you know, in 19, originally the zoo was the idea of the Raleigh JC's, and they wanted it in Wake County, but it was David Stedman and Dwight Holland and Wes Moser who, who put the whole package together to bring it here instead of Raleigh. So I think this is a big opportunity for a major tourist attraction. You know, I used to work for Richard Petty, and, and we thought having more than 1,000 visitors a month was a great thing, but to have 900,000 like the zoo does and 160,000 like the Transportation Museum does, those are major attractions, and I'm sure Amber would love to have a new one on the block like that.
Mac, do you know if, if any of this money's included in the state? For y'all don't know, the state is going through a similar process with their Recovery Act funds, and each representative has been asked to supply a little wish list.
I have not heard anything directly from, from David or Alan. My impression that I got from, from Alan was that since the textile museum money was in both the House and the Senate budget, it was not subject to reconciliation, and a lot of the stuff that Alan put into the House budget is not in the Senate budget. Just, as far as I understand, just the zoo money and the textile museum money is in the Senate budget. So I think, I think Alan was trying to put most of it.
That textile fund money doesn't include this roof, is that correct?
Well, it's, it's for whatever we need, but it, it's mainly for building renovation because the whole point is for us to do major construction before the state takes it over.
So that could be a possible resource?
It could be, it could be, but this money would make it go farther because there's a lot of other things we need to do, too.
How, how much was the state allocation, the, or request, you know?
In the, in the current budget?
Yeah, in the current budget.
Basically 500,000 a year for the biennium.
Whatever, whatever they ask for is in there, as it asked.
I, I read the document, the 90-page document. I know that there was different phases, and this is kind of the first phase.
This is, this is basically just to get the foot on the ground, because one problem is the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources can't ask for this and can't lobby for this until the legislature creates it and basically puts it in their lap, because they're not allowed to, to go on their own and ask for something new. So that's why we've gotta go around about to get it started.
Textile, textiles helped pay for my college education in Wake Forest. I worked for two summers, the two men, Zane Brison and Wallace Edwards, who ran the mill in, during Millican and Robbins. Were in my dad's church, and so they hired me to work in the, in the office, and I would go out and go out through the mill, gather tickets, and I knew one thing. I knew I had a deep appreciation for the men and women who worked in that mill, and I knew I did not want to spend my life in there.
Yes, well, there's all kinds of textile jobs, and I, I remember growing up as a very young person watching my great aunt sew pantyhose with my mother and my grandmother. So Randolph County had a ton of textile and apparel jobs.
But hey, for the ladies out here, because of our textile history, we have Spanx, so...
Which were, which were first made here in Ashboro at Acme McCrory.
Absolutely, they were, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mac.
Thank you.
Okay. City of Ashboro, McCrory Park. Ronnie, who's doing this? Mayor, you and John? I didn't see them come in. It's all John.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm David Smith, Mayor of Ashboro. Want to thank you for the time tonight. Appreciate your giving us the opportunity to stand up here and make our case. First, I'd like to introduce a few people in the audience that are here in support of our request. Back here, we have the athletic director from Ashboro High School, Steve Luck. We have businessman and entrepreneur, David Couch. We have the Pugh brothers, Ronnie, Doug, and Steve, who own the Copperhead franchise. We have our, I'm sorry, and Ronnie's our American Legion coach, has been to World Series countless numbers of times. And we have businessman JB Davis, and, and the city manager's dad, Jack Augburn, is here. And these people are here in support of this request tonight for McCrory Park. As you guys know, McCrory Park is a significant tourism and entertainment asset for Randolph County, and we're unique in Randolph in that Ashboro High School does not own a baseball field. We, the City of Ashboro, provide the baseball field for the Ashboro Copperheads, the Ashboro High School Blue Comets, and the Post 45 American Legion Baseball. We believe this is, as you know, many of you have heard and seen some of our preliminary plans, but we've just released, unveiled a very ambitious and significant renovation project for McCrory Park. I'm gonna let, introduce our city manager, John Augburn, and he's got a short slideshow for you, PowerPoint, and I'll let him do the significant talking, but thank you so much for the opportunity. You all have a copy of our application. I hope you'll take the time to read it. There's a lot of significant information in there and how this ties to tourism, entertainment, and quality of life in Ashboro, Randolph County. Thanks for your time tonight, and I'll turn it over to John Augburn.
Thank you, Mayor. Here's our application. Like the mayor said, you have it. So as Amber began, when we started this process, just to throw some more facts and figures in, as SMP Global Market Intelligence Report from September 2020, a year ago, identifies tourism and restaurants as two of the five industries most impacted by COVID-19 in our economy. Now, if you think how big the national economy is, that, that's a significant number. There's the Facebook page when Legion Baseball had to be canceled, and the 2020 Legion World Series and all eight regional tournaments, including the Mid-Atlantic Tournament, which we host, had to be canceled. Then that cancelization canceled all the hotel rooms that were booked in Randolph County to support that tournament and all the restaurants. There's the Copperheads to skip 2020 season over health concerns. Of course, that's our Coastal Plain League, the team the mayor mentioned. I would mention, too, that Ronnie Pugh is in the American Legion Hall of Fame. Randolph Hotels reported an average monthly occupancy decrease of 32% from 2019 to 2020 during the summer travel season, 32%. Here's right out of the Courier Tribune, Ashboro Lexington Hotels maintained structure during recovery recovery, but it's been a long process. So our hotel industry has hung in there, but as it mentions in there, they've done everything but close. And the hotel industry is not expected to recover until 2023. That's nationally, that's not here in Randolph County. Now, what we're seeing here in Randolph County is a lot of our traffic, and Amber can mention to you, tell you this also, is business traffic. Lots and lots of the hotel traffic is business traffic. We think we can go out there on a Friday night and see all the cars from West Virginia and Ohio and Western Pennsylvania and Michigan, go into Indiana, go into Myrtle Beach, but that's not who, who's staying there on Tuesday night in February. That's business travel. Well, pushing through all this pandemic, a lot of businesses don't expect to return to travel. Mr. Chairman, you know how expensive it was to travel when you ran your business. If you can just zoom it or web exit, you save all that expense. And we're, as with the flare-up with the COVID-19 Delta variant, you know, a lot of places are starting to not limit visitors again. So we're right back, we don't want to be right back where we are. Hopefully, we're not, but we don't intend to be, but we may be heading that way. So we, we talk about what can we do about it? Well, in baseball, we rally, right? We rally, we muster for a common purpose. We arouse for action, and we, we rouse from depression or weakness. So we're gonna get up from the period we are right now, and we're gonna win this game, right? Now, the great thing about baseball is it doesn't have a clock, so the clock never beats you in baseball. You're not out till 27 players are out. And of course, the rally cap, the famous rally cap. Commissioner Kidd and I are big Red Sox fans, and we're glad August is over, and we're right there in the bottom left with the 25 caps on, but I think that top one may be a New York Yankees cap. So what we're proposing is we went to the upgrades and tourism at McCrory Park. Now, McCrory Park is a huge visitor item in Randolph County. We have some improvements to the park shown there. If you've been out there lately, the county, the park doesn't meet standards. We upgraded the field about 15 years ago. It needs to be redone, but the stadium's old. It's historic, and all the things you want, it has character, but it also is historic in all the things you don't want. The seating's outdated, the restrooms are outdated, the concession stands outdated, and it, it limits the visitor experience. So we intend to make it more user-friendly. There's a plaza into which would be a traditional, more like minor league baseball game. There's the Beer Garden. Now, we, we did, you know, we crossed a, a bridge about 10 years ago in Ashboro, 13 years ago now, and have beer and wine sales. We do have a beer garden out there that does not operate, obviously, during the Blue Comets Games, Ashboro High Games, nor does it operate during American Legion Games, but it does operate during the Copperhead season. And we propose to build a field house. Now, we need to build a field house so we can host college tournaments. You can't host college tournaments without dressing rooms for the players. College players don't dress in a hotel room or dress in the parking lot. That's why they're college players.
What's the fun in that?
Okay, what's the fun in that? Yeah. The primary goal of the improvements is to bring more visitors to McCrory Park and generate activity and for businesses and higher, higher hotel occupancy rates, increase sales, tax revenue, and job growth. 25% of the county's workforce or in the tourism and hospitality workers were hit hard by the pandemic, and we've seen that industry still struggle to come back. If you've been up Main Street 311 in Archdale and tried to get a seat, you may get a seat, but you may wait a while and they may tell you they're short of help. Same out there on Dixie Drive. As a, as a landmark, if you've never been to the American Legion World Series in Shelby, that's about a $15 million half a week. The occupancy rate in Shelby's 90% as a national TV audience. Sales are about 130,000 tickets. Even small baseball tournaments can be well into six figures for championship baseball competition. Every year, each Ashboro has hosted the American Legion Regional Tournament. This year, we, we were the host team, which included also the North Carolina champion, which was Fuquay Arena, Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, New Jersey, two teams from Pennsylvania.
John, we, we did have a time limit. You might've got here late.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But we, you're, this is the largest item on our, of our 16, so we'll give you a waiver for about another minute here.
Thank you, thank you. So non, and even in non-traditional, non-divisional, Copperheads games, 30 hotel rooms are booked a year. Our, our project does align with three of your Randolph County strategic goals, and we're requesting 1.55 million, which is 25, 20% of the ballpark. Of course, we would match that. We know you're getting your, your funding in tranches, and we would, we don't expect to get it all at one time if we were funded. We would match that with our city ARP money. I want to mention that we already have our local, local support. We've received 1.1 million charitable gifts committed. The Qantas Club has planned to fund a new scoreboard, and various businesses have already pledged significant in-kind services. We've not even started a capital campaign. So our, our department, there it is, Mayor, Mr. Chairman, I wind up with, have you seen anything put on Facebook that didn't have any bad comments and all positive thumbs-up shares? Anything, anything. And that's the, and I would mention, too, that And that's the, and I would mention, too, that we do host the Ashboro Blue Comets. So, we basically use the park. The park is 70 years old, and it's just time to improve it. And the city did receive it, and we did receive the, which is now the Ashboro Recreation Center, one block from here, the old McCrory Gym. When the company was sold to Moss, and I want to thank my dad particularly, who did the work to make that happen a long time ago. And we will continue to host the Blue Comets, American Legion, and Post Forty-Five out there.
John, can you go back to the screen with the cost on it?
That one, Mr. Chairman.
Are those pretty current numbers?
Yes, sir. We received the latest update today, and Mayor Smith, we'll get Mayor Smith to call a special council meeting next week, and the council will let the contract for Phase One, which includes the playing field. The playing field is not, doesn't meet standard now in the grandstand and the concession stand and bathroom, which just, I'm ashamed of the bathrooms, but they're 70 years old.
Your request for us is the $1.552 of your ARP money, and where's the rest of it?
We'll fundraise, and then the city's, some of the city's ARP money, and then that of the city's cash reserves, fund balance.
You feel fairly comfortable with this, two and two-point million dollars in private donations?
Yes, I mean, yeah. And we've just begun. There's more out there, I'm sure, but...
Okay, that's projection that you feel comfortable with.
No, we've already received those as gifts. Yeah, we've got commitments for those. Yes, ma'am.
Have you already, I'm sorry.
Does this change the seating capacity or...?
It'll be bigger, yes, sir.
Do you know how much?
What did we say, Mayor? Close to, it'll be close to, be 660 seats in the grandstands. It'll be, you can probably squeeze 3,300 people in there under this plan.
And currently, what would be the...
1,400.
So, you'd basically...
Basically double it.
The, I guess to clarify, going back to, because, I mean, the purpose, I guess, of this particular ask, I mean, it's all about tourism and putting heads in beds here and filling up restaurants and the economic impact of that.
Right, we simply cannot host the Copperheads anymore.
Yeah, so...
Or host the American Legion.
With the CPL, and I don't know if y'all, whoever wants to address it, but we're running up on some limitations there as far as...
Right, we don't meet the standards.
And then same thing for the Legion Tournament?
That's correct.
Which is a huge driver that we don't want to lose that.
Right, which basically books every hotel room here the first week of August in Ashboro and Archdale, every hotel room in the county.
And then in some of those conversations I've had about it, the possibility of hosting other, like you said, college tournaments that, you know, maybe don't quite rival that Legion Tournament, but get close to it. I mean, that's a real possibility with this level of playing field.
Right, and then we could have, once the grandstands are done, we have concerts. Again, that drive hotel sales, things like that, non-traditional baseball sales.
What's the cost, what's the cost of, what's the timeline, I'm sorry?
We would need to begin Phase One pretty immediately, Mr. Chairman. We play 160-some games out, 180-some games out there. We play more games than a major league team, a field host. So, our construction season is basically September 15, October 1st to March 15, something like that. But fortunately, we generally have good weather. So, the first phase would be demolition and put the park, the grandstand back and put the field back.
What kind of turf?
We would go with the AstroTurf Swiss year-round. Yep. It's artificial turf. It'll be for, you do it different for different levels of play in baseball, and you do it different for baseball than you do football, but it'll be a baseball field.
What about the parking facility? There's always been one kind of bugaboo.
Yeah, the mayor and I laugh because we don't let anybody build bathrooms like that, but we have them. We don't let anybody have gravel parking in the city, but we have it. So, the whole parking lot will be paved and striped and lit and redone, and will be expanded. The parking, the parking will be doubled, and we'll do, that's the things we'll do out of our, out of our operational or general fund.
That's good.
............................................................
And so, Mr. Chairman, we'll use a construction manager at risk. The general statutes allow us to do that. We'll hire that person, and we'll do it over three years. So, we can go ahead and lock in prices and get them, you know, 14 months from now, get delivery and get installed, that kind of thing.
Yes, I guess one or two suspects in mind for doing it, or you going...
Well, we have a, the council, the council has approved that we have existing architect that's the same folks did the Burlington, the Fairchild Field in Burlington. They did the, what they now, the Grasshopper Park in downtown Greensboro. They've done a lot of parks. And we have some certified contraction manager, risk people to get proposals from.
I might say that having been to Shelby and seen their ballpark and their facilities, quite classy, but what I see here, this would exceed Shelby.
And it's ironically that the World Series in Shelby, because that's one of the cities we benchmark ourselves against. It's about the same size as us. It's kind of the same economy. We also benchmark ourselves against Sanford and Lexington when we took it, our tax rate and our personnel and all that.
You anticipate an area for rocking chairs there?
I may sit in one if we get the project done, yeah. We'll buy you one.
Can I get a rocket? Yeah, for those that don't know, Shelby has a series of, you can sit there and rock, in rocking chairs at your ballpark and watch ballgames. So, that's where that's coming from.
Probably came from P&amp;P right over there. So, that's all we have, Mr. Chairman. Other than, we'd like to close with, I think it goes on, doesn't go unnoticed that the city of Ashboro and Randolph, county of Randolph, I don't think our professional relationship nor our personal relationships have been as strong as it is now. And I want to thank my friend Hal Johnson. It's no secret, we've been friends 30 years, and the four of us and the two of you guys, we grew really, grew really close during the hospital odyssey, but that's about behind us now, and maybe we can go on another one. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, John or the mayor? All right. Thank you. Thank you for my gifts. Thanks for the gifts. It's Town of Seagrove. We've got two projects, the Lux Cannery and then the Train Depot. Help can bat them up or whatever.
Commissioners, I'm David Fernandez, Mayor of Seagrove. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you on these two very important projects that are actually in progress. These are not things that are a wish list. These are things that are actually happening. I want to make it very clear that the pandemic has devastated Southern Randolph County. The potteries last year all closed. They're all individual businesses. First time in these very proud people's history. They had to get loans, they had to get alternate funding, they had to pivot, they had to somehow survive, and they've managed to do that. The two projects that we're requesting will be transformational for not just Seagrove, not just Southern Randolph County, but for all of Randolph County and potentially for the state of North Carolina. Seagrove is synonymous with pottery. These two projects that we're requesting funds for will really push that even to the next level. And I've asked Dean Lael to present for the Historic Lux Cannery. He's chairman of the Lux Advisory Committee, which is a 501(c)(3) organization that goes out and requests funds, and then also comes back to the Town of Seagrove to try and coordinate with the town council. The second person will be Sue Spencer. She's head of the Historical Society for the Town of Seagrove, and she'll have a PowerPoint presentation, too. So, I'll turn it over to Dean.
Thank you, David, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing us this opportunity to serve Randolph County. My name is Dean Lael, and we are renovating the Historic Lux Cannery in Seagrove, North Carolina. We're asking for an investment of $500,000 for infrastructure to help out recovery of the devastating effects of the pandemic and make transformational economic changes, as David said, in Randolph County. We have already raised $750,000, including $45,000 from the Seagrove Area Potters Association, and we're nearly complete with renovations in Phase One. We lack just a few items to make the lower level a reality, and this investment will further open access to the upper level for development. We have already added three businesses and this new street connection, which, so if I can advance this slide? Right era, okay. So, there's where we are, and there's the new street and parking area. With handicap access, will serve the multitude of activities of the center. In addition, by supporting art, culture, and history, we will attract thousands of visitors from across the region. This project is preventing a vacant building from becoming derelict. In fact, it is becoming a vibrant center for arts, commerce, utilities, entertainment, government, and cultural development. The first phase of the center will have a capacity for up to 460 people and 6,900 square feet, and increasing to 1,100 people in the second phase. Unfortunately, a lot of fundraising and potential activities have been put on hold or delayed by COVID. Visits to local potteries are being severely reduced. We want to help the local potters and area businesses by bringing more people to the community and providing a place for residents of Randolph County to gather with great amenities and service. We, of course, will serve people of all races and backgrounds with special emphasis on the elderly and economically disadvantaged. A nonprofit advisory board of six manages this project, recommending the expenditures and reporting results to the Town of Seagrove. For more information, you can check our website, luxcannery.weebly.com, and thank you very much. Are there any questions?
You made a request of the state, too. There's 1.3 million asked for this project in the state budget.
Yes, with the state, yes.
Yeah, we've, this is, our request to you is for the first phase. There's a whole upper section that connects to, I don't know if it's still up, it's not, that connects to the first phase.
I mean, is, did you ask the state, I mean, are they two separate numbers or is the 500 included in the 1.3 million?
The whole project is 2 point-plus million dollars to do. So, it's in, those two requests were totally independent. The other thing I wanted to point out, in fact, when I saw this slide, the Town of Seagrove receives a total of $10,000 a year on PAL funds. Just that road would take 11 years of our PAL funding, not doing anything else on any other Seagrove road in order to create that one road. So, I mean, this is transformational for us. I mean, there's, we really don't have a lot of options when it comes to doing a project like this. That infrastructure is vital to this project. Any other questions?
Any other question? Okay. The Train Depot renovation, Sue Spencer?
Okay, I live in the Seagrove area in Why Not, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about the Seagrove Depot project. Let me see if I can get this thing going here. No, it's gonna be, there we go. No, what did I do to it?
The right era.
Right era, thank you. All right, every year, as you know, thousands of visitors come to the Seagrove area to go to the pottery shops and to make their purchases there, and also to see the potters that were in their studios. As you know, when the pandemic came along, most of those pottery shops closed. Many are still closed, and COVID had a devastating effect on our area. The pottery festival that was held in November had to be canceled and I think will not be held this year, so there is a great need in our, in our area. Just as the pandemic hit, we had just undertaken an ambitious project to renovate the old Seagrove Depot. And we had a three-fold purpose in doing this. The first thing we wanted it to do was to serve as a welcome and information center right in the center of town for visitors. We also felt it could be used as a local gathering place for senior citizens. There is nowhere in Seagrove that fits that need now. And thirdly, we wanted to develop a local history museum to preserve our rich heritage of this area. And as you know, when we say Seagrove, we're not talking about just the small city limits. We're talking about the, probably about a southern, the southern area of the county, probably about a third in landmass, all the way over Pisgah to Erec and up to Ula. We call the Seagrove Community, the Seagrove Area. The project that we wanted to do was to renovate the original Seagrove Depot to make a center that could be the information visitor center and a local history. I wanted to tell you how we acquired this depot. It was when the Aberdeen to Ashboro Railroad came through our area in 1897, one of the stops was gonna be near Yao's General Store. And mostly, they picked up crossties from the local sawmillers, and they had to come up with a name for this area. And the gentleman who was the civil engineer for the railroad was named Mr. Seagroves. So, they decided to honor him by naming it for, after him. And when they painted the name on the depot, the sign painter ran out of space, and it became Seagrove, and they had to drop the S. But it became a community, the Seagrove Community. The depot stayed there even after the railroad closed in 1951, until they needed the space, and they were gonna tear it down, and Dorothy Alman and Walter Alman said, "Well, we'll move it." And so, it was saved and moved to their home. And recently, it's been moved back to the center of Seagrove, near its original location. That's the building we'd like to use. The reason we need this museum is we began to acquire some historical items. Someone came in the library one day and brought this little item and said, "Will you keep this? I found it in my parents' house when they died. Don't know what it is. It's a Seagrove Telephone Company stamp." Nobody even knew that Seagrove ever had a telephone company. So, that was our first item. And then after that, we had other things brought in. This is the original bell from the tollhouse for the Plank Road, which was built through North Carolina in the 1850s. And we got lots of personal items. This is a pair of wedding shoes worn by Ms. Bertha Richardson in 1920. And this is a spinning wheel from a lady in Pisgah who grew the cotton, spun the thread, wove it into cloth, and made clothing for her family. And we also received a Civil War sword that was brought back from Atlanta at the end of the Civil War by a Seagrove soldier who lived in Mitchfield. And then in addition, we've had people to share with us their family histories and genealogies and lots of family stories that we don't want to lose. So, we have a couple of hundred booklets or books like this. We also, let me get back one, I missed that one. We also have several hundred old photographs that have been given to us or have been loaned to us to digitize. All these things are located in storage right now, just waiting for a great place to be displayed so that everyone can enjoy them. And that's our goal in all of this. We have a great vision for a building which would be centered to the Seagrove Community and that would just lend a little spark to the community to make it a vibrant community. We've got, there's a pedestrian walkway plan, and later, we hope to have a park in the center of town. But we think that the renovation, the... of town, but we think that the renovation of the depot would just start all this off, so we are requesting funding for that. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Sue. Questions?
Do you have an idea exactly, when you talk about renovations, specifically what you would have to do to secure?
We have had, the building has been moved, and they put a new roof on it, and we have had several contractors to look at, an architect to do a plan, several contractors to look at that and be sure. We know we'll have to build restrooms with it, you know, which will also benefit the town because there are no public restrooms outside of businesses in town, and so we would do those. The platform we made bigger so that it can host events such as Christmas tree lighting or musical programs, and so we've gotten some information on that and gotten estimates on it, and we think it will cost about $275,000 to renovate.
So $275 gets it open?
Gets it open, yes.
And public restrooms for visitors.
Yes.
Some of these, we've had several projects today involving older buildings, and I had a note here, ADA access, is that?
That will be required.
Come into some of the, I know one of them earlier, we had a two-story building.
Oh, yeah.
Can I address that a little bit, Sue?
Please.
We hired a local architect, actually the same architect that did the Lux Canary, Darian Walker. He's done a complete plans for the building, for the renovation. He's had engineers down there, and so they're all incorporated in the plan. Those plans have been presented to the Randolph County Building Department, they've been approved, pending a contractor. So it's all in place. Hope that helps.
Excellent.
And for clarity, this is the Town of Seagrove project, not some nonprofit group or anything like that? It is the Town of Seagrove.
Yes. Thank you very much.
We just, well, three presenters. Juvenile Day Reporting Center.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna start out by saying what an amazing opportunity our county has by receiving these funds, especially in the wake of this heartbreaking year that we've all faced. I'm so honored and thankful to be standing up here in front of everyone, fighting for our most vulnerable population in our community, our youth. As part of the Randolph County Strategic Plan through the Juvenile Crime Prevention Task Force, Randolph County will decrease and prevent youth's needs for future involvement in the juvenile justice court system, increase graduation rates, and improve social skills. Preventative programming, such as what we have at the Juvenile Day Reporting Center, has been implemented and will help youth develop the life and decision-making skills necessary to becoming a successful adult. Some of our main goals at Randolph County Juvenile Day Reporting Center is outlined in the Randolph County Strategic Plan, is to provide early intervention and interaction with at-risk, court-involved, and court-diverted youth that ensures accountability for actions and provides opportunity to improve decision-making, coping skills, functional life skills, stress management skills. And another goal we have is to strengthen family bonding, provide substance abuse education and treatment, as well as positive peer relationship building through our mentoring program. COVID-19 has continuously impacted many members of our community. Risk factors that contribute to juvenile delinquency have been exasperated due to the pandemic. Substance use, poor academic behavior, poor peer relationships, and traumatic disruption of the family dynamic are risk factors that have been impacted and continue to impact our community. Unfortunately, our youth have been faced with drastic, continuous changes that are being shown in mental health concerns today, such as anxiety, depression, social isolation, and substance use. The Juvenile Day Reporting Center has seen an increase in demands for our services, and we need to be able to adjust programming to meet the new needs our community is facing. Funding will allow us to achieve these new goals the pandemic has faced us with. Randolph County has taken a stance in tackling the opioid epidemic, and the Juvenile Day Reporting Center stands with the county in doing so. We provide services to youth and our families. Statistics have shown that there have been over 500 overdoses in the past 365 days in Randolph County. Substance use in juveniles have increased dramatically as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to ignite the opioid epidemic. In 2019, there were about 12 overdoses to youth under the age of 18. Today, in the past 365 days, there's already been 22. The Juvenile Day Reporting Center has already implemented a substance abuse education class, and during the COVID pandemic, we have seen a consistent growing demand for our substance use program. In an effort to bridge the gaps in services, we have applied and received our license by the Department of Health and Human Services as an outpatient treatment facility for juveniles. We provide treatment to juveniles and have made it accessible for families to receive additional support in identifying, dealing with, and supporting their youth with substance use issues. We do not take insurance for our services. All of our programmings are 100% free, and we provide transportation to all Randolph County residents. We would like to take it a step further and provide the options for families to obtain a drug test in office instead of having to send them to a third-party affiliate and pay for those services. Funding from this grant will help us achieve this and bridge another gap in the services in our area. By adding an option of completing drug screens, assist in appropriate pay for our licensed clinician, assist with adding a new electronic program for inputting data, and store case management documents for clients with the utmost confidential manner. We'll also be able to provide additional training to our staff to understand treatment planning for those undergoing trauma specifically caused by COVID-19. Another area of concern caused by the COVID-19 pandemic is the poor academic performance that will continue to grow with every quarantine situation a youth is placed in. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we were torn from, students were torn from their places of education, forced to learn remote, on their own, and without structured days like they once were used to. This caused poor academic performance, lack of structure, loss of motivation to complete assignments, and frustration for students, parents, and the schools. We currently have a tutoring program that is being offered at our facility, and in 2019, we served a total of 15 students in that program. During the pandemic, in just two months, we were over-doubled the amount of kids in our programming. Demands for students to attend our program have increased so much that we do not have enough Chromebooks to comfortably serve our youth. Funding will be used for a one-time purchase of more Chromebooks for our youth to use while in our facility to keep them on that structured plan to complete their task. We would also like to have funding in order to strengthen our program by offering incentives for educators to come into our facility after hours to assist in tutoring for our growing population of youth, so they can have more focus, smaller groups, and also receive more one-on-one tutoring to give them focused attention that's so desperately needed to catch them up. Another area that the COVID-19 pandemic has affected, and one of the most disheartening, is the disruption of the family dynamic. Parents have been forced to make difficult decisions with childcare centers closing, loss of jobs, schooling choices, quarantine issues, and many other stressors that they have on themselves. Due to these concerns, Child Protection Services have removed an overwhelming number of children from their homes, and law enforcement has seen a dramatic increase in domestic violence calls. All of these have contributed and continue to contribute to the risk factors to our youth. Currently at the Juvenile Day Reporting Center, we offer a family class. However, we've seen a need for a more parenting-specific course with an emphasis in meeting them where they are and supporting them through these changes. Funding will allow for our current staff to be trained in the new parenting program that we will begin using immediately, as well offer it in the future as part of our programming that we maintain through our other grants from the state. Though, this will be a one-time startup cost for the program. The parenting program is an evidence-based curriculum that will allow parents to learn on their own time, and it'll teach them about how to handle youth engaging in risky, delinquent behaviors, substance use in their youth, appropriate communication and discipline, and also how to advocate for themselves and their children. It will allow us to expand the current clientele that we are reaching right now by opening up classes to all parents with youth regardless of their age. It will also allow parents the opportunity to work on classes at their own time, on their own pace, at their own schedule, as they'll be able to have online opportunities to complete those courses, and they will come into our facility once a week to meet with a caseworker to go over what they've learned. This will be able to help.
That's your time. Finish up.
Okay.
Go ahead. Finish up.
Okay. So, funding from this grant will allow us to serve more juveniles in the area that they were affected in the areas listed below. We'll be able to strengthen our classes and with more engaging, interactive lessons, and we'll be able to offer other stuff to help our program support our parents.
So, if I understand, this is not additional hiring? We funded the mentor position with our budget this year. This is program-related and training for current staff?
Yes, sir.
And what happens after the two years?
So after the two years, when it comes to the program parting for the parenting class, it's a one-time thing, so we won't need any additional money for that. And then we'll also be using what we already received from state funding to continue on with that program. Other areas for like the mentoring program and stuff like that, we will be doing fundraising, is also seeking other grants for that area to keep that funding.
Okay, so currently you have 30 students in tutoring?
We don't have 30 currently, because of school ending. This year, we're, I think we're at about six right now, so we're already starting to see referrals come in.
How did you develop the budget, $400,000?
So if you look at the budget that we connected in there, it's broken into the one-year and the two-year funding, so we're planning on continuing on for next year. In year one, there's more funding that's being requested, and that's due to the startup costs for the step success with the one-time purchase of the Chromebooks. The parenting program is also in there for the one part of the year, not the second part of the year. And then the substance abuse and the mentoring program, those programs are only funded through the county, and it's just the position that's funded through the county. So any additional monies that we need for those programs, we have to find outside sourcing and do fundraising for. So that's the bulk of the money. As far as the last part of it, we were looking for a vehicle to be able to use, and that's because with the programs that we run now, because we're state and county-funded, it wouldn't be an issue because technically 30% of the county matches for our vehicles that we have, but due to just wanting to remove ourselves from the state for those county-funded positions, we would like to just have our own vehicle for that part.
Right. Other questions?
Just to make sure I'm clear, there's two, there's a substance abuse case manager and then a mentoring case manager. Those are salary benefits there? Okay. And I was getting a little confused when you said those were already funded.
So they're funded by the county every year in our budget. It would be able to basically pay for those positions for the next two years for the county not to have to support that.
Okay, so that would be a reduction in county funding?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand now, thank you.
All right, other questions? Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Kenny Sharon? We have two cooperative extension requests here to consider.
Thank you. So you wouldn't have to hear me twice, I brought Annie Mills with me. She's gonna make the first presentation about the community food systems. Annie?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. Tonight, I'll be presenting about our local food system coordinator position, and this is a relatively small ask financially to support North Carolina, North Carolina's number one industry, which is agriculture. The food systems coordinator position would be part of North Carolina State University Cooperative Extension System. This position would work mostly with cooperative extension educators, food assistance agencies, county and state officials, producers, and other food-related organizations. The food systems coordinator would work to build partnerships among these stakeholders and identify priorities for food-related projects in Randolph County, including a food hub. Through the strategic partnerships formed by the food systems coordinator, we'll be able to better inform programming decisions and the best use of Randolph County funding moving forward to help the county reach its public health goals and also build a more resilient food system. We all remember the early days in the pandemic and the shock that we experienced when we saw empty shelves in the grocery store. This was caused by several weak points in our food system being exposed or exacerbated by COVID-19. On the producer side of things, COVID-19 negatively impacted the ability of farms to attain labor. It affected food processing systems, transportation of food, and it also switched up some supply and demand because of our move to working and learning from home. Farmers and ranchers in Randolph County do have problems reaching intermediary markets. This is an issue for small, new, or beginning farmers, and that was an issue identified before the pandemic by the Piedmont Dryad Regional Food Council. So we do have a lot of food production within the county. We just need a better system to utilize our local products in order to meet consumers' needs. On the consumer side of things, COVID-19 negatively impacted a few different things, but also prior to the pandemic, the Randolph County Community Health Assessment did expressly state that food security was one of the main issues that residents here face. There's over 14% of individuals in Randolph County that experience food security, and COVID-19 has again further exacerbated some of these issues due to job loss and supply chain disruption. So we have three goals for our food systems coordinator to address within the food system to strengthen it here in Randolph County. The first goal of the coordinator would be to assess what the needs of consumers, food resource agencies, and agricultural producers are. We have great groups working on all of these projects currently, but we could very much benefit from having one person that's able to view the issues and needs across all of these groups and help stakeholders to work together. Our second goal of the food systems coordinator position would be to help enhance market opportunities for agricultural producers here in the county. There's no one-size-fits-all approach to increasing market opportunities for producers, so we really need someone that can have a boots-on-the-ground approach and work directly with producers to understand what they want and also what they need to improve the markets here. The third goal of the food systems coordinator position will be to provide educational programming. As cooperative extension, we're uniquely poised to make changes within communities because of education. We can make changes within the community from the bottom up by educating the public. So cooperative extension distributes educational programs in a variety of ways, always accessible to all types of people. The education disseminated from the local food systems coordinator will really help make changes from the bottom up. So as an outcome, Randolph County would be more food resilient during times of uncertainty, disaster, and pandemics. It was repeatedly shown throughout the pandemic that local and regional food systems were more, able to more easily pivot compared to national and international food systems. As a result of the coordinator position, food businesses here in the county would also benefit economically from increased sale and the support of local markets, keeping money within the community, and all residents can benefit from improved nutrition and food access. The total funds for the position would be $219,000 for a total of three years and the addition of 2,000, the remaining months of 2021. And this is a full-time position.
The state doesn't, either one of these two positions, the state doesn't. The state doesn't, either one of these two positions, the state doesn't share in any of this?
No.
It's all on us?
And we can answer more questions. That's the end of our presentation here.
I have one question. Somewhere in here, I'm not finding it right now, but somewhere it says that you want to increase the farmer's market vendors and customers by 20%. Does cooperative extension do the farmer's market now?
Not, we don't run a farmer's market, but Annie and this food coordinator, Andy does it right now. We're trying to do a better job at helping farmer's markets build capacity to host vendors. And we've done a survey, Annie's doing a survey now. You've gotten how many responses from the vendors?
We've had over 200 responses so far. 90 of those from vendors at the markets with information on changes that they would like to see at the markets and how they would like to see the market supported.
I know that the number of vendors has dwindled in the Ashboro Farmer's Market, which is the one I go to because it's the one that's the closest to me. And I haven't heard any lately, but back before the pandemic, I heard a myriad of suggestions for making it better. And so I just didn't know if you folks had taken it over. Or so you would be working with any of the farmer's markets in the county?
Right.
To increase participation?
Right.
Okay, good.
Just building capacity, providing education
Sure.
to those market leaders, how to make their markets more viable and productive.
And addressing the markets within the county, we would do that in a literal sense, but also look to create new avenues of revenue for the producers as well.
One of the issues is you've got small farmers, and they can't get from this level to this level. There's no intermediate markets that they can work in. So this position might encourage somebody that is a small producer to invest and to create a market to get him up to where it's a more viable operation rather than just a part-time kind of thing. I think this is in line with what Piedmont Dryad Regional Food Council is trying to do in each one of the counties. And again, it was a presidential initiative on the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. So this is a, I won't say a hot-button topic, but pretty much a concern, especially with the flare-up of COVID again and those kinds of issues, not just COVID, but other natural disasters too.
I think the new president's going to continue. He has his own, he's going to continue that one also through this year.
Great. Other questions?
Thank you.
Switching gears now, we're going to talk about digital literacy and skills position. Got that one? Okay. I didn't give you much transition time, did I? There we go. This position or request is something that we're working on here in the county already. If you come back to full commissioners meeting on September 7th, I will present a full report on broadband activity in the county. This ask is for a digital literacy and skills coordinator position with a little, I will give you a little bit of background on that. So what is broadband? Broadband is basically you always own internet connection. It can be served by any of these types of services here, DSL, cable, modem, et cetera, et cetera. It's always on. There's a spectrum of engagement work in broadband. We have awareness, we have been aware, there's broadband available, there's access, there's adoption, and there's advancement. We are working on almost all of these, and we'll share how that's happening right now. And awareness, you will have potential resources that can be available, that can provide the available infrastructure, having access and adoption and advancement of life outcomes. So what does that mean? We have worked in the county through the BAND NC grants that I was able to get through the corporate extension office. We have developed a group, we call ourselves the Digital Alliance, Randolph County Digital Alliance. The missions of, these are participants in that group. If you see, there's a large list of community stakeholders. The mission of that group is to allow everyone, household or business, to have the opportunity to earn, learn, and be well using the needed digital resources. The pandemic made it, exacerbated the need to be able to earn, learn, and be well. You had to remote work, you had to do remote learning, you had to do doctor's appointments over the internet. So we want all Randolph County citizens to be able to earn, learn, and be well using these digital resources. And you can read the mission statement there too. We are working on the awareness issue, starting this week on September 1st. Laura Legu, Legu, Glue, I have to say that right, she is going to be our digital ambassador. The goals of that role is to promote planning and build awareness of the alliance and the issues related to broadband. I want her to solicit participation in the broadband survey because better data leads to better resource allocation as we look to getting more funding for broadband activity. And also promote the emergency broadband benefit program in those underserved roles. So we're doing that in awareness already. That is coming from that BAND NC grant there. That's the second round, was able to get the second one of that, and that's created that digital ambassador position for that. This next role, the request I'm making before you tonight is for a digital literacy and skills coordinator. It's one thing to have awareness and availability and access to the internet, but if you don't know how to use it and how to earn, learn, and be well with it, it's useless to you. So that's where I think corporate extension can make the largest impact in our county for, in the broadband issues. We have to teach the digital literacy and skills. This is proof that it's in the American Rescue Act Plan, item 2.4 in the appendix is where this would come from. Adoption rates in Randolph County is, they're pretty low, really. We have coverage in Randolph County, and a lot of places there are issues with coverage. There's issues with speed of coverage. It was one of the biggest ones. FCC deems broadband at rates of 25.3. That's really slow. A lot of times, if you're on a DSL modem, it's really tough to get the speed you need to do earn, learn, and be well. So anyway, we're working on that, but we're also working on these digital literacy and skills. Digital literacy is a spectrum. You have your basic skills of knowing how to turn on a PC, using a smartphone or email. You need moderate skills to use the applications that's been created. Then you have advanced skills like developing software, coding, analysis, and cybersecurity. So you have a spectrum of digital skills and literacy. Why North Carolina Corporate Extension? For over 100 years, North Carolina Corporate Extension has been the source of non-formal education to help people earn, learn, and be well. It just fits with our mission. It fits with what we do. If you think about the history of corporate extension, this is what we've been doing. We can take classes at community college, that's a great, but those are usually working toward a degree program. This would be a non-formal source of education with a corporate extension service. So this digital skills and literacy coordinator would provide these experiences and be able to teach the skills and knowledge that people need when they need it. I can imagine, one of the things that they do, and is written in here, is they'll help develop a digital skills training corps. Annie has the luxury of having the Master Gardener Program. Those are trained volunteers that help answer gardening questions in Randolph County. I envision this position developing a digital skills training corps where we can get those trainers to come in and train like a county bank. So one of the works in the bank could come in and teach an online banking course. You could create a whole slate of digital skills training volunteers, like the Master Gardener volunteers, to help meet the needs of Randolph County.
Kenny, one minute.
Yes, okay. Almost fine. So we're running, this would be just like the community food systems person. This would be a full-time extension agent using, it's a full-time county salary position. Here's the budget we have for that, salary and benefits, based on a 40-month calculation like we did with the other one. Addition to the position, this person's going to need some tools to work with. So we have a mobile classroom funded proposal here. So that's it. Any questions?
I have a question. You had, go back two slides? No, go forward one.
That one?
Right there.
Yes.
Mobile classroom equipment. How do you anticipate using a mobile classroom?
Well, we're taking the laptops, places like that. We could go to community centers. Getting out into the community is basically. The library would be great partners. I've talked to Ross on this. They already have some digital literacy going on in libraries. We could enhance what they're doing. We could set up this classroom in one of their spaces, hold classes there. It'd be a great partnership with what they're already doing, community centers, other places like that, or even school rooms if we had to.
Good. I mean, when I saw that, I knew that there was that intention to go into the different community.
Right. This is going to be a proactive and not just reactive type thing. We want to go out and be in the community to teach these skills. Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Kenny, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Your cost is for three years. That's, these numbers include the full three years?
Yes, all three years. Absolutely.
So...
I put in there starting this week, September 1st, but I know we can't do that, but I could dream, right? I just did 40 months. So it's 36 plus the September, October, November, December of this year. So the amount would be reduced if we can't get it started earlier.
We're going to get some advantage from your efforts at state level too, aren't we, Kenny?
I hope so. Absolutely. Starting Wednesday, I'll be designated as the Broadband Fellow for the nation in corporate extension. So I'll be working on this issue nationwide, and I'll be looking toward Randolph County. The country's going to be looking toward Randolph County as some of the examples of doing some of this type of work here in the county. So...
Proud of you.
Yeah, glad to be here.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay. Bad Ruth. Last inning. Mary jump.
Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners, thank goodness for trails. I don't know what we would have done during the pandemic without having trails and other outdoor spaces that provide a safe place for people to go out and exercise and get some peace of mind. Randolph County is very fortunate. We have a national recreation trail, the Uwari Trail, and we have the Deep River State Trail, State Trail, as well as the municipalities have lots of trails in their parks. So I'm here to talk to you about Deep River State Trail projects because those are some projects that are investment-ready and will help with the demand that came from COVID to have more trails. Let me just see. This is the Deep River Trail. It's 15 miles. It goes from Randleman to Franklinville to Ramsor. It was designated a state trail in 2007. The Randolph County TDA funded a conceptual plan, which was approved by the county commissioners in 2017. The three municipalities that I mentioned have invested a total of $1.2 million. And five of the 15 miles of trail are completed, and we have the land for 12 of the 15 miles. To help this along, we were able to actually design the Deep River State Trail logo. And the city of Ashboro, which has a great sign department, helped with the logo. State Trails approved it, and we were able to put together 27 signs, both directional signs and trailhead parking signs. The city of Ashboro paid for all of that with no cost to anyone. We also did a brochure because even though we have five miles, they're in three different locations, and nobody can find them. And during the pandemic, I'd go to one trailhead, and people didn't know about the other. So we put this together. The Piedmont Legacy Trails person put the brochure together. Piedmont Dryad Regional Council did the mapping, and our TDA has been distributing it. And it's on their website, and it's also on the county's website. So like I said, it was a bright spot to have five miles along the Deep River for family and friends to have a safe place to go outdoors. And I must say that, you know, exercising outdoors has not only the benefit of physical health, but it really contributes to your mental and emotional and just spiritual well-being. The mayors can all tell you that they was 200 and 300% increase, but you really couldn't tell because they're all scattered along these trails. And we learned, I think, the lesson I learned was that trails are no longer a nice amenity. They're essential to not only our physical, but our, like I mentioned, mental, emotional, and spiritual health. So the response is build more trails and invest in some trail construction. And the area that's most ready is the Deep River State Trail. Most of the projects you see, I'll go over very quickly, have matching funds. So that really stretches the county's dollars. And the other thing is, you actually, could this be part of tourism too? Because for every dollar spent on trail construction, $1.72 is generated every year, every year, in business, in state, and local taxes. So the first one on the list is the top priority in the Deep River State Trail conceptual plan, and it is to connect Franklinville, which has 1.75 miles, plus Faith Rock, which is a 3/4 of a mile, to Ramsor, which has 3/4 of a mile. This is near the US 64 Highway. We said, well, why don't we just stick up a bridge up there? Well, we looked at it, had it engineered, which the county paid for, and it's going to cost $400,000, nearly $400,000. Because when you look at the floodway there where Sandy Creek is coming into Deep River, it looks like the San Diego Harbor. The floodway is so large. The environmental review has been done, and this will create 2.5-mile rail trail, plus you can add Faith Rock. So if you did the round trip, you're doing almost six miles. And this will attract people, not just from the county, but from the region and possibly the state. Currently, we have a $100,000 request for recreational trail program funds, and so we're requesting only 150, since there's about 150,000 in county strategic implementation.
One minute.
One minute. Okay, got it. This is the Ramsor Trail Extension Project. You probably already read about this, but they're working with Unique Places. They do not own the riverfront on both sides of the trail or the dam. So this would, they will now own, they purchased the land for that and are using it as a match. So we would need at least $50,000 to help match this Parks and Recreation to extend the trail and have a proper trailhead at the Old Depot. We have a lot of bridges. There are 19 bridges, and we need the preliminary engineering... There are 17 bridges, 19 bridges, and we need the preliminary engineering on the, on, for those bridges and, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, five, I guess it's five bridges, six bridges. Talked to the Piedmont Regional Council and they, they estimated about $180,000 for these. The, we have the last track for the Franklinville to Cedar Falls, and Franklinville has already talked with Saponah about having a trailhead there. We're going to ask for $100,000 in RTP funds in, in 2022, so we only need $300,000 for that. We need a conceptual plan. The county owns three miles of the Deep River. And talked to Piedmont Tribe Regional Council, they think we could do a $50,000, then that would pay for that, that plan. Last one is Franklinville to Ramsor Paddleway. Probably in 2023, I would ask for $100,000 from RTP, and the, the county would only, the art money would be only for $50,000. This is real important because this will connect Franklinville to Ramsor, and now that Ramsor owns the riverfront. So there's the summary. Obviously, COVID-19, we revealed we need more trails. You're investing $1 million in trail construction, and that addresses this need, and like I said, some of these projects have matching, so you're really leveraging about $400,000 in, in new, new funds.
Mary Jo, when this, this, the trail issue, getting it complete, et cetera, I was told there was a, I don't know if it's a budget request of the state for about $8 million. So how, how does that fit in with what we're, what we're looking at here?
Well, I, I put together, I think you were referring to what it would cost to do all, finish up all the projects, and that's $8 million. I, I work with state trails on that, but we have not put in a request.
What do you mean by all projects? If this, this, I mean, what you're showing is, is taking this to a completely set point.
Well, we don't have a trail on the county landfill property, no trail there. We don't have a bridge at Harlan Creek to connect Ramsor. We don't have the, some way to get around the rockout crop that would connect Randleman. We have a, Randleman has a, a grant right now to do, build Phase 3, but we can't connect it to Phase 2 because there's a big rockout. There's a whole lot of, and we'll have to, there's about six bridges that we need to build. So this is, this million is, all I'm talking about are investment-ready projects. These are projects that are ready to go. Those other projects are not ready to go.
But what you, what you presented will give a completed
Oh, yes.
Longer trail.
It will, it will create five miles of trail, and it'll connect three and a quarter miles of trail, which is very important. People don't like, you know, walking along a trail and then they have to stop or they have to turn around and go back. Like in Ramsor right now, there's, the Harlan Creek Bridge is not there. So you go six tenths of a mile and you turn around and you come back. And then you go on the other side and you go six tenths of a mile and you turn around and you go back. And this would, would complete it. I mean, the, the part, you know, the, the part with connecting Franklinville and Ramsor, I mean, that will create five miles round trip. And add Faith Rock, you got only six miles. And people will travel here for that, and that will help local businesses, like the Franklinville Diner, and there's lots of places that would benefit from this. And the other thing is that we also want to work on the water part. Deep River State Trail is the only state trail that's both a land and a water trail. So, and now, you may be referring to the, the, the state has no money invested in trail, in state, in trails. There's, the money they're using is federal money. So there is a bill in for 25 million on the House side, that would be $10 million each year of the biennium, and then 5 million for some state trail things, and the priority will be given to state trails. Well, we used to have six state trails, now we've got 12. So I don't know what's going to happen because the Senate has $13.5 million for trail construction, but it's all earmarked, and none of those trails are in Randolph County.
So, but none of this is included in that, or it is?
No, so we would, we, we could fast-track, I could get more money because, for example, that bridge, you know, we have been talking, I've asked you for money for that bridge four times, and you've given it to me. But it is $400,000 in the, and you can only ask for 100. If we get this new money, we could ask for more money, and we could, we could just do this much faster. We could fast-track this thing. If I had $8 million, I could, plus this 1 million, that's $9 million, I could finish Deep River State Trail.
25 miles.
Plus, 15 miles, plus the, but, you know, at least three paddleways, paddleway sections. And right now, we have the, you know, the, the three miles that we don't have land for from Worthville to Central Falls, we're building river access, so we'll have a three-mile paddleway, but for, that Randleman and Ashboro are working on. So that money is, it, there's just, like I said, and one of the things that's happened is that 2023 has been named the Year of the Trail, which was a big deal, unanimous in the House and unanimous in the Senate, and the governor signed it. So that, we're trying to bring a focus on trails because in the last two years, we've gone from six state trails to 12. That's how popular they are.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Thank those of you who are still here for this process. We had some good information tonight. I think it's, we can see great benefits to our county from the 28 million or so that we have and partnering and leveraging other sources of funds to provide for better quality of life in Randolph County. Thank all of you. Again, our, our folks who are watching on Facebook, thank you for participating tonight. And any other business to come before this board tonight?
We'll meet on September the 15th at 5:00.
September the 15th at 5:00. We will continue this with a focus on infrastructure. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. We are adjourned. All right. Yeah.
Water bottles. Will you take them on the trail?